The content represents unedited versions of computer-generated captioning of city council meetings, which should neither be relied upon for complete accuracy nor used as a verbatim transcript. Please select Show Captions in Zoom to view captioning. You may also click on the carrot, the up arrow, next to the Show Captions button, to select your preferred captioning language, alter captioning settings such as font size, or view the full transcript in a side panel. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with California Government Code Section 54953E as authorized by Resolution of the City Council. Please contact city.clerk@mountainview.gov to obtain a copy of the applicable resolution. All members of the city council are participating in this meeting by video conference with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at mountainview.letstar.com, youtube.com/mountainviewgov, and on Comcast Channel 26. As noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments during the public comment period by visiting mountainview.gov/meeting to enter the Zoom webinar, or by phone by dialing 669-900-9128 and entering webinar ID 84351267142. Any emails received by 4:30 p.m. today were received directly by the city council. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The city clerk will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Abicoga?
Here.
Councilmember Kamei?
Here.
Councilmember Maticek?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hicks?
Here.
Mayor Ramirez?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. We'll now proceed to item 4.1, Options For Filling A Council Vacancy. Translation services are available for this item. We will now hear from our interpreters.
Buenas noches a todos. Vamos a seguir con el artículo 4.1, que son las opciones para llenar una vacante con el consejo. Si es que ocupa traducción al español, por favor oprima el globo al inferior de su pantalla que dice "interpretación" y seleccione español. Gracias.
Thank you. Is there Chinese translation as well or Spanish only? Okay. We will now proceed to the presentation. City Clerk Heather Glazer will present the item whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Let me share my screen real quick. And hold on just a second. Go ahead and play things. There we go. Okay. So we'll do a high-level overview of the options available in filling the seat vacated by former councilmember Sally Lieber, and then City Attorney Logue, City Manager McCarthy and I are available for any questions that you have. So the Charter gives the council two options for handling a vacancy and states that the council must either appoint a new member within 30 days of the vacancy commencement. So in this case, on or before January 29th, or call an election on or before January 29th. There's no mechanism for the council to either appoint someone to serve as an interim until an election can be held, or leave the seat vacant until the next general municipal election in November of next year. In the past 10 vacancies, seven were filled by appointment. Two were close enough to a general municipal election that those vacancies were just folded into that election, and one was filled by special election in 1985. Oh, we'll go back. The earliest date recommended for an election would be August 1st, which would essentially be a standalone election, since it's highly unlikely that any other jurisdiction would need to consolidate on that date. And it's the highest estimate that we received from the council, so around 2.1 million. The other option is the November 7th date, which may see some consolidation from other jurisdictions, so might be a little bit lower in costs, but we won't have that information until later in the year. We provided some examples of timelines for each process, which were pulled from the report, but as you can see, again, both options come with the same time constraint, which is that appointment has to be completed by January 29th, or a special election needs to be called by January 29th. Finally, the decisions that need to be made this evening are first and foremost whether to choose appointment or an election. If it's appointment, we have several items that you'll need to weigh in on this evening to set the process in motion. And if it's an election that the council chooses, then you'll need to set a date and give direction to staff to work with the county and bring back resolutions calling that special election. Funding for that would be included in your 2324 budget process. So with all of that, I'm going to stop share now. If I can get to it. Seem to have lost my cursor. There we go. Okay. So if you have any questions, Kimber, Jennifer and I are available, and I'll turn it back over to you guys.
Thank you. Does any member of the council have questions? Councilmember Abicoga.
Thank you, Erin. Happy New Year to everyone. So I had a couple of questions, and sorry, I didn't get them earlier. If we had the opportunity, I probably went out last night. So I have two questions I have. One is for a special election, is the timeline suggested for like the earliest August? Is that our staff's recommendation, or is it like the county or the state? Like, could we potentially do something sooner?
The county requires that the resolutions be delivered 125 days in advance of the election, and the nomination period has to, you know, be substantially the same as any other election that we would run, so 113 days to 88 days prior to the election. If we could technically have it a little bit earlier, but the issue that we're running into is that you won't have a new council member until after your summer break starts. So in an effort to accommodate the break that you've already set up for yourselves and the kind of flow of work that staff kind of relies on through that break, we suggested the August 1st date because it wouldn't substantially change how long you would have an active council member for.
So, you know, normally we have elections, primary elections, like in June. If we were to try to do something like that, just to be uniform with past election dates, could we do that?
So this is an odd year, so there's no primary.
Right.
The only date that the county has an election already scheduled for is May, which we've missed, already missed the cutoff for calling that election. And it's an all male ballot election, which the elections code does not allow us to participate in. So we have to have an election with male and vote centers.
So a June date, we could still make it based on the days required before, for all of the postings and so forth? It would just be?
It would require you to meet during your break.
During our break in the summer?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, because the county gets 30 days to count ballots. And once we have them, we're legally required to declare that result at the next regular meeting, which you technically have, but are, you know, kind of taking a break from, based on your annual schedule.
So we would have to meet in July to certify the votes?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then are we able to add any other items if we were to call a special election? For example, the, you know, transit-oriented tax item that we didn't do this past year that we were planning to? Could we add something like that, or any kind of charter cleanup amendment, anything else to the ballot?
I'll take the first part of that. And then I think that maybe the city manager or the city attorney would have some weigh in on that. Some things you can put on a special election, some things you cannot. So technically, there may be room to put something on there. Of course, that was not part of the estimate that we received from the county. So that would be a wholly separate thing. But there are some restrictions when it comes to finance stuff. So I'll turn it over to the attorney or the city manager.
Thank you, Heather. Jennifer Logue, City Attorney. I would have to research it. I don't think charter amendments can go on special elections. And it would depend on what kind of tax measure you are talking about, so I would require a research. It also, I think, would be very difficult for me to pull together an ordinance, a tax measure, or charter amendments in this short period of time in order to get it on the ballot in June. You would be talking about just having the city attorney's office do a lot of other stuff would go by the wayside in order to pull something like that off in time for June. So the charter amendment one, though, I'd have to look. I'm pretty confident those can't go to special elections, but I'd have to double-check that.
I was actually primarily interested in the TOT, frankly. So that's the one that if we could put on the same ballot would be, you know, beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw.
Well, basically, I had the same questions that councilmember Abicoga had, so thank you for asking those. But I have to say, I am still confused about the timeline here. So let's talk a little bit more about this timeline. It seems to me that when I added it up, there was like 60 extra days in here that longer than it absolutely had to be. And so what do we have to do before the 125 days that the county needs happens? I mean, I know there's work, but I don't know what it is.
There is work that we need to do. That's not necessarily the reason why the August 1st date was suggested. So let's just say that if you had an election the beginning of June, and you want to pick days that are going to work with having a nomination period that spans for full weeks, right? So Monday through Friday for four full weeks. So if you had it in the beginning of June, the county is not getting us the results until the beginning of July. And then you're going to have to have a meeting that was not on your adopted schedule in order to certify that election. And that's going to mean a lot of work that staff is going to have to do over the summer break, where we're normally trying to get caught up on a whole bunch of other things. So since you're not meeting during that time anyway, we had figured that the August 1st date would more closely align with when you're planning to come back from your summer break anyway.
Okay, so there's a four-week nomination period? In other words, it has to be... Where'd that come from?
That's the election code requirement.
That's the election code. So that doesn't matter whether it's a filling a vacancy or a new...
Correct. It's a normal nomination period. It doesn't change for a special election.
Okay, so, all right. Well, I think the idea that we're really not going to meet from the end of June until mid-September is highly unlikely. It has, I suppose there might have been one or two years where that happens, but it's certainly not standard operating procedure. So we'll see. There's just a lot of work that the city does, and things are, you know, may very well come up that we need to do to meet in there. But, but thank you. I understand it better now. It's that four weeks that is really not fungible. It's a given.
And the fact that the county requires the resolutions 125 days in advance?
Right, so it's sort of like four weeks plus 125 days is the amount you absolutely have to have before the election.
In that ballpark, yeah.
In that ballpark. Okay, thanks. Now I understand it much better.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I did have a councilmember commit.
Great, thanks so much, Mayor. So one of the questions I had was about public input. So we have a very active public. And so for both processes, can staff kind of reiterate what, I mean, aside from the election? Should we go that route? We know that people would be able to vote. If we go the appointment process, could staff maybe outline a little bit about how the public may be able to provide that input aside from the outreach that we've received over the winter break? So some people have suggested, for example, we have the six suggested questions as an attachment. Some people have provided council members with ideas of alternate questions. We're going to open it up for public comment. And so before we go to public comment, I thought it would be informative for us to be able to share with the public how they might be able to provide input, aside from, you know, direct outreach to council members, as well as, you know, commenting tonight and how we might be able to incorporate that. Should we go on, you know, appointment route? So that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, so, you know, as you can see from the staff report, the appointment timeline is tight. And there's really not a lot that we can do about that because it's dictated by the Charter. So aside from this evening providing input, as you said, you know, reaching out to the council as a group and providing, you know, suggested questions or input on process, really after tonight, if the council decided to move ahead with appointment, really after tonight, the only thing that you could spend more time on are the questions that you would ask during interviews. Because if you move with appointment tonight to set everything in motion correctly, we kind of have to get everything nailed down as far as the application and any questions you may wish to include in the application. The interview process, the timeline, everything kind of has to be set tonight because we have such a narrow frame to work with. So that would be my recommendation, is that people contact the council and, you know, speak at this meeting, or if you choose to defer nailing down the interview questions that you would ask during interviews for the January 24th meeting, you could do that, and that would be another opportunity for people to weigh in. But aside from the questions that you ask live during the interview, everything else kind of has to get nailed down tonight.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And some things, since I've had the joy of being on the council's policy, or, you know, being part of the, sorry, CARC, the Council Appointment Review Committee, we've received a lot of feedback from the CPPC, the Council Policies and Procedures Committee. But given that this is a special, this would be an appointment for a vacancy, what comes from the CPPC would not be necessarily the same guidelines for this process. And tonight, we would be going through what we would do, correct? I just want to clarify that too for all of us.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, the process that's outlined in Council Policy K2 for appointment of body members is a great place to start because you've already got something in writing, and it's already a process that the public is familiar with and that you all are familiar with. So we definitely have kind of woven a lot of that into our recommendations as far as the process for your interview structure. The only thing that I would say is a little bit different is since these are likely to be a little bit longer interviews and more in-depth, and certainly very, very important, that it would be a good idea to set the interview order ahead of the interviews, whereas when you have, you know, EPC and whatnot, we kind of have maybe an order that can be moved around. So that would be the only real deviation that we would recommend. But certainly, the policy that you already have on the books for that is a great place to start.
Great, thank you. You know, I do have a couple of comments because I think one of the things we've moved to is group interviews as part of the recommendation and have it kind of around robin's style. But, you know, I would hope that we could augment that to have, you know, individualized interviews for this. But I think that that's something council can discuss. Is that correct?
I might ask City Attorney Logue to weigh in on the interview process the council has utilized in the past versus what would be appropriate moving forward.
So when you talk about a group interview, round robin, I did not, I was not able to watch this, the EPC interviews. So I'm not familiar with the process, but when you're talking about round robin, are you talking about they're all, basically, they're all in the room, and then you're kind of going, you know, through each one of them and asking the questions? And in changing that, are you saying that potentially for this process, you would have maybe, hypothetically, if we're doing this in person, you're having one person at the podium, and you're asking them all the questions at once, and then the next person comes up to the podium? I think the process would be fine.
Yeah, so to clarify, you know, when in the past, well, one, I hope that these can be in person, but I feel like this is deviating into comments and not questions. But I just wanted to clarify because the Council Policies and Procedure had changed Policy K2 to move to a group interview style. And so, yes, it was, it would start in basically alphabetical order. One person would start, they would have the question, and then it would move to the next person in alphabetical order, and people would get an allocated time. But kind of given that we are coming back in person starting January 10th, you know, my hope is that we would have, the council does have the opportunity to maybe move towards being able to augment the process should we see fit. And I wanted to clarify if we have that opportunity, and it sounds like your answer is yes.
Yeah, I think that you could, you know, change slightly the process that you use under K2 for EPC for this one as far as interviewing. I just want to, you know, be clear that everyone would be in the room anyways, hearing the questions? Yeah, so, okay.
Sure. That's not my concern. I think it's always a logistical challenge, depending on, we don't know how many applicants. Should we go down an application route? We don't know how many applicants. So I thought I'd ask the question now. So, you know, another question I have is what we've done in the Council Appointment Review Committee is we have our application process for EPC. There are supplemental questions. And then the Council Appointment Review Committee actually has an opportunity to change questions should we see fit, and we're able to do the same with EPC, and we have that time period. So to circle back, City Clerk Glazer, my question is, you know, tonight, we could come up, should we go the appointment route? We could come up with an application process, maybe a draft list of questions, and then we would have an opportunity to revisit them and perhaps even discuss further when we go through the interview process, correct?
Yeah, you could. As long as, you know, we would recommend that the questions be the same for each applicant and asked in the same order. You don't necessarily need to have them delivered ahead of time to applicants, but if you do want prepared applicants, that there might be an argument to be made for that. So that would be up to the council to decide what they wanted to do.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hicks.
Well, I'm glad councilmember Kamei started opening this line of questioning because I was going to say these questions for comments, but I think it is, probably works better to open up some of them as questions instead. And I'll preface my questions by saying, these are all about the appointment process. I'm actually open to either the special election or the appointment process. But I do have some questions about how the appointment process might work. And I have, like councilmember Kamei, I've been getting a lot of inquiries and suggestions, a lot of good ones, and also a lot of ones from residents, and also a lot of ones that kind of are very different, and we couldn't do all of them. So one of the questions that someone has asked me is whether we could have a forum, because we can continue to hold virtual forums. If we could have a forum that's lengthier, that would be a special council meeting on a day that we don't have selected yet. So that we could have the forum, residents could watch, and then I suppose we could have it in person too. That's just not the way this person asked it. People could watch, and then we could make our decision on a different date. Is that something that would be feasible? And again, I'm not, there's a lot of possibilities here, so I'm not married to this particular one. But I just wanted to know if that would be a possible option, you know? Pick like a Thursday night special council meeting forum and have, you know, a more thorough, you know, something that's more like the League of Women Voters style forum.
If we're looking at the timeline proposed... If we're looking at the timeline proposed and and understanding that, you know, in the report, we had floated a January 26th interview date that we now know has several conflicts. I think we're going to be hard pressed to fit something like that in. And I see City Manager McCarthy's hand is up. So I'm sure that she has some input on this as well.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor Hicks. So I think when you look at the reality of the timing, we have a little over three weeks to go before January 29th. And we have the two regular meetings, one on the 10th, one on the 24th. This meeting tonight was intended to somewhat be that forum where you would hear feedback from the public, certainly on what option to choose. Now, the forum that you referenced in terms of League of Women Voters, that would be separate from the city holding a forum. And there certainly, I think, would be opportunity for any outside groups to hold a forum, forum like that, that would be outside of what the city would sponsor. But I think just realistically, it's going to be really hard to hold another meeting similar to this one. So I think I would want to know more from council what you all would be interested in doing in another meeting. Now, if it's about hearing feedback about the questions that people might want to pose as part of the interview process, if if that's part of the feedback that you all are getting, you will have that next time that you're actually going to be interviewing folks. You'll you'll have enter an intervening couple of weeks. So we could make sure that we're soliciting feedback during that, during that advertising period, whatever direction you all would want to give us tonight in the next couple of weeks. We could try and incorporate that with the meeting that was proposed for the end of the month. Another idea is that if you get feedback from the public regarding certain questions that they might want to be asking, you could also think about, should you go the appointment route? You could think about including questions on the application itself. So you could ask questions on the application, maybe some that came from the public that you're interested in knowing about. And then you could also save some for the actual interview. And and I would suggest you all discuss that tonight. So I guess the bottom line is, yes, we could schedule a special meeting, but I'm not quite sure what it would accomplish other than, you know, what you all are going to be doing tonight and then again in a couple of weeks. So I would just want a little more clarity, I guess, on what 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 you all would would want to do in in another meeting.
Well, thank you for clarifying. The other thing I was going to ask about, because you've raised this to me before, that actually, when we talk about questions for candidates or applicants, that we're talking about two sets of questions, the questions on the application and then the questions that we ask them in some sort of interview. And I think that's important to be. Thank you for bringing that up. I was, I was not suggesting that, I was not asking about the whether the League of Women Voters or some other group, I think it's unlikely a group will be able to pull something together in this time, although I'd love to be surprised. Yeah, I was asking whether the city could, and what the resident had thought was that a space of time between the interview and us making the decision would be useful. So that's why I asked. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Showalter.
I just wanted wanted to ask about when the Form 700 is really required. Is that required as part of your filing documents for applying? Or is that required before you take office?
The requirement, it would be on an assuming office. We've added it in as a piece of the application process to give you all a better idea of the candidate and, you know, what what they're working with as far as their potential conflicts of interest. So that could, you know, everything about the application technically is is changeable, including, as we've already discussed, adding questions that the applicants would need to fill out and and submit. So.
Okay, so the Form 700, I mean, obviously, you need it before you assume office. But but it's not a, it's not a, it's not a requirement for applying. I didn't remember that I needed to do one as a as a candidate. And I I couldn't be wrong about that, but.
Oh, when you're a candidate, you do have to.
You do do them? Okay. I've been doing them since the mid 90s anyway, so.
But it's strictly as a part of the application process for appointment, there's no strict requirement that someone fill out a Form 700 before they take office. And we've, we've chosen to add that requirement into the application. But again, all of that is is subject to change.
Okay. And just following on in the the discussion of the interview process, I I do think that this is one of the interviews that really does lend itself to a group interview. And the reason I think that is because, you know, we work as a council, and it's very important to see how people interact with each other. You know, we 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 add on to things that, you know, one person will bring something up and and the rest of us may respond to it one way or another, agree, add on to it. And I think that understanding that give and take is, it's one of the soft skills that's very important in serving on a council. So I I don't think this one lends itself to being a a single interview as well as some of the other positions we might be looking at. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any remaining questions? I have a question that is substantially similar to questions from Councilmember Kamai and Vice Mayor Hicks, and that has to do with what we must, if we decide to pursue an appointment process, what we must decide today and what we could potentially push out until the January 24th meeting. So, for instance, there was a distinction made between questions that would be asked in the application, which we have to pick now, but questions for the interview itself could be determined later. Would that also apply to the selection procedure? For instance, the step of the proposal here, which is pretty robust. But is it absolutely essential that we determine the selection procedure tonight? Or is that something that could wait until January 24th?
I would recommend that you give good consideration to the procedure that you would like to use tonight. That the more that we can solidify it tonight, the smoother your interview process goes. And so as much as you can get off your plate, and if you if you'd like to give more attention to questions, you know, on the 24th, then, you know, certainly that that would be appropriate. But as much as you can nail down tonight, the the better off and the more smooth the process will be overall.
Okay. And related to that, we can provide direction tonight on interview questions and a selection process. That does not preclude a majority of the council in the meeting itself from changing the questions or the selection process, right? That's happened in planning commission interviews, for instance, you know, over the past several years. Is there anything that would, if we decide, for instance, you know, that the questions we decide we picked today were not appropriate, could we, do we have the discretion to change them during the the meeting when we conduct the interviews? And City Attorney Seer hand is up.
Yeah. I think you can. You could change the questions. And and I'm assuming you're talking about in the beginning in the meeting before you started interviewing any particular candidate? Or are you talking about some way, sometime midway through your interview process, and you decide to change the questions? I think the problem that you need to keep in mind is that fairness and equity considerations are going to be part of this process. Unlike an election, you know, in an election situation, the electorate is allowed to, for any reason, decide to vote or not vote for somebody, right? Reasons that are appropriate or not appropriate. I mean, that is the freedom that voters have. But in an appointment like this, you are talking about a process that does need to be fair. And so you you could change the questions, but you need to think about the fact that the person who's interviewed first is going to be at a disadvantage to everyone that goes after them because everyone that goes after them is going to hear all the questions. And so you might want to think about how how that plays out. If if you want to change the questions, you know, right at the beginning of the meeting, and everybody hears what they're going to be, you know, before you start the interview process, that would probably be okay. But to the extent that someone is disadvantaged in the process, that could create issues. And so you just want to make sure that whatever you decide, it is equitable equitable for all the candidates, regardless of whether or not they're first up or last up. Does that make sense?
It does. I I might have a follow up, but let's go to the Council appointees first, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would suggest that if you all want to, if you decide to go on the appointment route and you want to change questions, that you would change them no later than January 24th at the regular meeting. That way, whoever is going to be interviewed, whoever will have applied, they will know the questions, they'll know the order because one of the other things that we recommend is that you all consider the city clerk doing a random drawing of the order of interviews. So I would suggest if you do change them, you you talk about it tonight, and then you have time to talk about it on the 24th as well. But I I would, I would highly recommend that you don't go past that and change them on the fly for all the reasons that the city attorney just spoke about.
And does that also apply to the selection procedure? That we could talk about that tonight and then decide to finalize it on the 24th?
Yes, I I you could. But again, I would say as much certainty that staff have tonight, we will do a much better job in the next three weeks making sure that the process is smooth and we're not reacting, you know, quickly to changes that are made. But yes, you could do that. But I would advise that the direction that you give us tonight be clear, and we get as much certainty this evening. And then the 24th be reserved more for the interview questions, if you want to talk about that. I think there is some low hanging fruit on the application process itself that you really could just solidify tonight. And some of the longer discussion, it sounds like, would certainly be reserved for the interview process. So I think should that, should the application process be and the appointment process be the route you choose? I I do suggest that we try and nail that down tonight so that we can get moving on it. We only have three weeks.
Right, okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. Councilmember Kamai.
Great, thank you. So just a follow up question on some of the discussion. So we kind of talked about what the timeline would be, should we go the the special election route? But for the appointment, it sounded like the 26th is not going to be the day we're going to have the special meeting for to interview applicants. Is that correct? And so did staff have a new date that they were proposing? And I think, again, in the vein of trying to get as much accomplished tonight as possible, I think that that would be helpful for council to know.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Kamai. So the 26th, it does appear there are a couple of conflicts, unanticipated conflicts for that evening. So we would suggest that council determine, again, if you choose the appointment route, a separate date that would need to be around that timeframe. The 24th, council's already meeting for your regular meeting. The 25th would, you know, be the next day. So that's not ideal, but that's certainly an option, the 25th. The 27th could also be an option, also not necessarily ideal. It's a Friday night, and you may have applicants or candidates that may not be available then. So the 30th could potentially be an option. And I've already discussed this with the city attorney and city clerk. Now, it is one day after the 29th, but I do think there is a way that you could do it on the 30th. And I would ask the city attorney to address, address what we've spoke about and how we would would be able to do that on the 30th.
Thank you, City Attorney Jennifer Loeb. So in doing a little bit of research, I know that our charter does have a strict 30 day deadline. But one of the things that is very common in court proceedings, when deadlines fall on a weekend or a non-business day, it is very common for it to be able to roll over to the next day. So because January 29th is a Sunday, I think legally, we can argue that the 30th, you know, that that we can roll that over to to January 30th and still be technically substantially with, you know, compliant with the charter requirement. So I think you would be safe to have it on the 30th.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hicks.
I'm going to ask another question that I I thought I'd save for comments, but now I think it's better, better as a question. And that is that the, when I look at the application, it's it's, unless I'm reading it wrong, it's extremely brief, unlike the ones we usually use for commissions and committees. Am I missing some documentation? Because it it, we usually, on the commissions and committees, ask things like, have you ever been to, you know, if you're applying for the Visual Arts Committee, have you ever been to a Visual Arts Committee meeting? And and ask a few questions, a few general questions on your, you know, your orientation to visual arts and your thoughts on that. And I don't see that in this application. Am I missing something? Because I would think it would need to have some of that.
No, you're not missing anything. And that was certainly, you know, we wanted to to give you all the leeway to add whatever it is that you you wanted to this. So however you'd like to tailor it to capture specific information, as City Manager McCarthy said, some low hanging fruit, things that you can kind of glean from the applicant, just through the application process, that you wouldn't need to then spend time asking questions about during the interview process. So we can certainly make any changes to the application that you would like.
Okay, great. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Abigail.
Thank you, Mayor. We were talking about the appointment process. I thought of a question. Is there any requirement that we have to interview everyone who applies? I guess my current concern, frankly, is if we get a large number of applications and given the short timeframe we have, you know, I don't think it's realistic for us to be interviewing folks for 12, 15 hours. So is there, are we allowed to find, come up with some kind of mechanism to, you know, narrow down the pool to a more reasonable interview number?
Thank you, Jennifer Loeb, City Attorney. I I do not think it is legally required for you to interview every single applicant. We would just need to come up with a process by which you would eliminate applications on the front end.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's a a process that I believe the City of San Jose is using. So to the extent staff may want to explore that, the City of San Jose staff probably could answer whatever legal constraints they've had to overcome to provide that policy. Are there any remaining questions? Not seen any, so we'll proceed to public comment. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. A timer will be displayed on the screen. Let's allocate two minutes. The first speaker is Bruce England.
Thank you, Mayor. Bruce England, speaking for Mountain View Coalition for Sustainable Planning and Green Spaces, Mountain View. We submitted a lot of suggested questions for the candidates if you do an appointment. We didn't take a position on whether appointment or special election is the best way to go. I didn't see our letter in the records online, but I did send to all the individual council members. I hope that our letter will eventually be included in the public record. I'm not going to go over all the questions because there are quite a few. But I think the first one is worth stating because it's really key to all the rest of them, and that's this from the letter. Are you familiar with Sally's priorities and activities as a council member? And how are you prepared to carry forward her legacy? Members of the public that follow council decisions and changes in the city know Sally Lieber and where she stood on the issues as cited in the questions that follow, which I'm not going to say. When they voted for her, the citizens were voting for her positions. In our view, any replacement must be familiar with the city council operation issues, especially considering the incredible breadth of experience and knowledge that we're losing with Sally's departure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Peter Katz. Thank you. The next speaker is Peter Katz.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. It's Peter Katz, CEO of the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank you for taking on this important task of filling the city council seat. In terms of process, the chamber respects whatever decision the council chooses, be it appointment or election. The chamber remains ready to assist in any way that we can, especially disseminating the information presented tonight to our membership via social media and our broader mailing list. We can also host a forum if that's deemed appropriate. We rely on you to let us know what would work and what won't. But regardless of approach, the interview process itself remains an extremely critical component, and we're grateful for the care and attention invested in coming up with sample questions. As you finalize the questions to be asked, we would like to suggest four additional ones. First, if appointed, how will you develop and maintain a relationship with the business community? Second, what efforts would you take to help our existing businesses stay in Mountain View, make it easier for new businesses to enter, and reduce the number of longstanding empty storefronts? Number three, the downtown precise plan, the economic vitality strategy, and the matrix study are all important projects that the city is undertaking to ensure both short and long term economic vibrancy. How would you instruct staff to prioritize these activities? And four, what are your thoughts and ideas for improving the housing supply to meet today's requirements, including R3, as well as planning for the future? Relatedly, increased housing leads to increased attendance levels at local schools that are already near capacity. How do you plan to address this? Thank you again for your considered effort, efforts, and we look forward to working with the new council member, whomever they may be.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Cox.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, I'm Robert Cox, speaking for the steering committee of livable Mountain View. We're sad to see that council member Sally Lieber has resigned. She was a great advocate for livability in Mountain View, especially in regard to our downtown and its historic core. As the council considers how best to find her replacement, if you interview candidates, please question candidates on their ideas concerning key items on the council's agenda for the remaining of, main part of Sally's term. Of particular interest to us are the downtown precise plan, part two, plans for the Castro Street pedestrian mall, the great separation of Castro Street, the historical ordinance update, and the parks and rec plan. It would be great to have someone on the council who can provide expert input on these items with the excellence that Sally Lieber would have. Thank you for considering our views.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tim McKenzie.
Hi all. Thank you for, council for your thorough questions. Really helped me kind of wrap my head around what the appointment process would look like. And I think that I also found it interesting that the super majority of times that this has occurred in Mountain View history, there was an appointment process that seems reasonable, and I have plenty of faith in council to be able to do, avoid the sort of fiasco we're seeing with the house right now, situation with inability to find a speaker. I am certain that council will be very thoughtful and deliberate in appointing someone if you do go that route. And I'd like to echo a little bit of what I heard from some of the previous speakers. So if questions do come up of, or including the question of how, how the potential appointees understand Sally's policies and how, what their vision would be for, how they would possibly carry them forward or approach the issues that, because it's filling a seat that voters had a say on a few years ago. I have plenty of faith in y'all to make an excellent decision. So good luck choosing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Stephen Goldstein.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. I just wanted to ask a question because it did seem like there was some confusion. From my understanding, there is a vacancy regarding the city council. Is it true that actually a person must fill the position in 30 days in order to be compliant with the charter? If that's the case, and I got to say, the, the only way you could potentially have held an election at this point in time would be to have actually started the election as of the date which Sally Lieber had submitted her her notice. But in any case, please make sure that the public record does clearly state that you are actually by charter given a very fixed deadline, whether to either appoint or have an elect who already performed within 30 days. That's all I ask. And anything else, thank you very much for giving me the chance to speak.
Thank you. The next speaker is Megan Frayley.
Hi, thank you, council. Good evening. I'm here to express my concern about the potential threats to democracy posed by the special appointment process being considered. As a citizen, I believe that one of the most important principles of democracy is the right to choose a representative through fair and open elections. By bypassing this process and making a special appointment, the city council will be disregarding the will of the people and their right to have a say in who represents them. I understand that the council and each member may have their own preferences and desires. But please, please remember that the role of an elected official is to represent the wishes of the voters. And in this case, it's replacing Sally Lieber. Please remember the special appointment process being considered is not what you want as a council member, but rather what the voters wanted. In order to minimize the threat to democracy posed by special appointments, it's important that the process be as closely aligned with democratic principles as possible. This could include using a transparent and impartial selection process, ensuring that all qualified candidates have an equal opportunity to be considered and publicly interviewed, and allow for public input and participation. Further, it's crucial that everything done rigorously and seriously, keeping in mind the threat to democracy, particularly in this day and age that we live in. And I would love to hear council actually discuss the philosophical ethical implications of a special appointment process, and if going forward with an appointment, have a very meaningful public conversation about how as a council, this is going to actually be as aligned with democracy as possible. I urge the council to carefully weigh these considerations and to prioritize the principles of democracy in any decision to make an appointment. In that vein, really just two things. One, please have an open, transparent process where public input is allowed. And please keep in mind, it is not about what the council members individually want. This is not an opportunity to change the makeup, but please find an appointment that will most closely represent the values that Sally Lieber has so represented for us as people who voted for her. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Bee Hanson.
Hello, council. That was an outstanding statement by Megan Frayley. With that, I think we are really need, we really need to move forward. We see a part of the process, recognizing that we do need to be public involved in that process. The thing, and I really appreciate Robert Cox's statement as well. And I'm going to add to his list, housing is the most important thing. And at this point, it looks like the housing element is going to be played again. And that's really the number one issue, as far as I'm concerned, for Mountain View. We really need to have an applicant or an appointment of someone who is familiar, deeply familiar with that issue. And I hope you'll keep that in mind when you make your decision. Be of my head.
Thank you very much, Bee. The next speaker is Edie Keating.
Hello, council. So Mountain View is a unique city. Its voters in 2016 passed rent stabilization. So if you are choosing, as I expect you will, to add content questions to either the written application or to the interview process, I hope that exploring, by having some way to allow the applicants to comment on Mountain View's CSFRA rent stabilization is included. One reason this is important is that there are rental housing committee not, appointments in your future, and in this, this person appointed will be weighing in on the rental housing committee appointments. Another litmus test, in a sense, or, you know, interesting point of data that you might ask about is the applicant's positions on Measure D, which would have amended the CSFRA. I support whatever process you choose. And I just, you know, also asking how they would choose rental housing applicants or other applicants, like a public safety advisory board, which are coming up, would also be informative. I also support that you have chosen, and I hope will stay with that choice or have that choice ahead of you, to ask for the disclosure form as part of the process for application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is the caller, area code six five zero, ending in eight zero nine. Caller ending with the phone number eight zero nine. Believe you'll have to press.
Can you hear me? This is Leslie Bane.
We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you so much. So my comments, never forget, we are here because Sally Lieber was confused about a matter of conflict of interest. A detailed explanation has not been given to the public. My best guess, which I have to guess because I'd rather have the facts, but I don't have the facts, is that as a member of the council, Lieber felt a duty to lower Google's tax burdens on a piece of telecom equipment. But as a matter of the SBE, she has a responsibility to ensure that imposed taxes are fair for everyone. Couldn't do both, so she had to resign. Under a functioning democracy, voters have the right to cast a vote for a candidate who wants to do what is best for residents, not what is best for Google. Li Zhang finished fourth in an election held in November. She earned about half the votes of the incumbents. Some say she should not be appointed because she lost. They argue that some unknown candidate who received zero votes in November would somehow be a better choice. I don't follow that logic. At this point, the fact is that Zhang earned more votes than any other potential candidate. I'm not alone in my belief that Zhang would be the frontrunner if a free and fair election was held. Appointing anyone else instead of requiring them to compete in a free and fair election, what can I say? That is not democracy. Please, please, please don't do this. I strongly recommend that a special election be held. I ask the city council to respect the right of voters, choose who represents us on the city council. There is nothing more fundamental to a healthy democracy than that.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker is Hala.
Yes, hello. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and council staff. My name is Hala Alshawani. I'm a longtime resident of Mountain View. I believe that Ms. Li Zhang won over 6,000 of Mountain View residents' votes in the last election, which was only about two months ago. Now that the, and she came, you know, as you know, fourth right after the three elected incumbents. Now that the incumbent Sally Lieber is no longer there, she vacated her seat. It just makes a lot of sense to me that the next person democratically elected by the voters of Mountain View be Ms. Li Zhang. I am wondering if there's a hybrid solution where the city council would consider appointing Li Zhang, who was democratically elected, and she would have been actually on the council if Sally Lieber resigned before the, you know, election or did not run. However, that did not happen, and now it's, I think it's appropriate for the council to consider that. If they're not willing to appoint Li Zhang to this position, then I strongly recommend that we do special elections, even though the process is lengthy and it is expensive. I think a democratic, truly democratic representation of the public in council is essential. City manager or a city attorney talked about equity and fairness. And I don't see how, you know, allowing only six people to choose a person instead of all of the residents of Mountain View would be equitable. So I hope you consider my point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Anna Marie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. So thank you all for being here. We, I appreciate this conversation. So first of all, Sally Lieber was an exceptional council member that truly understood the issues in our community. She will be greatly missed in this role. Like Megan Frayley, I am deeply concerned about upholding democracy in this process. Mountain View residents voted for Sally Lieber because of her positions on issues, and it would only be fair to put this decision back into the hands of the people. If the appointment route is taken by council, then there should be extensive actions taken to make sure that the will of the people is held in place while replacing Sally Lieber. There should also be transparency when it comes to vetting any applications, like anything that council decides to throw out or not move forward with. I'd love to see what more information about that. Like many other residents, I personally do not think Li Zhang is a viable candidate at all. And in a special election, I believe she will not get the votes to be on council. So I really hope council moves forward with making this as democratic as possible and upholding the fact that people, residents of Mountain View overwhelmingly voted for Sally Lieber because of who she is, what she stands for, and what she actually does. And the fact that she's not afraid to stand up to Google or pretty much anyone. So I'm hoping council does the will of the people and moves forward with a special election. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Alex Brown.
All right, all right. You don't have to twist my arm. I'll accept the appointment tonight, save everyone all the time. I'd be happy to join you guys up on the dais. I would, I would actually love that. That'd be fun. No, I'm going to miss Sally up there. I am looking forward to hanging out with her in the audience at council meetings again, just like we used to. I think that the appointment process should be fair, should be transparent. And as part of that, I would be happy to help organize any sort of forum or community organized interview with the appointment. Potential appointees, candidates, candidates? Those who would offer their services as a possible member of council. You know, we've done it before for the various elections. I'd be happy to do it again, including the virtual component, try to include as many people as possible. I don't think an election is worth the time that we're not going to have a full council or the money or the effort. So I trust you guys. You'll figure it out. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak, we will return to the council for deliberation in action. Before deliberations start, I would like to outline the process we will follow tonight. Council will first discuss the primary question of whether to either appoint someone to fill the vacancy or hold a special election. I will now open the floor for council discussion and determination on this first matter before moving on to other considerations. And just a quick question for staff, is it your preference for there to be a formal motion to either conduct a special election or hold an appointment process before we proceed to the second step? Or is it, you know, is a simple show of hands sufficient?
I'd say a show of hands is sufficient, but if, you know, a formal motion feels more comfortable, then that's fine too.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Hicks.
So I'm just going to start out by saying I am, I'm actually open to, to either the special election or the appointment process. I've gotten, like I'm sure all of you have. I've gotten, like, I'm sure all of you have, many comments from residents saying that we'd be crazy to do a special election and others saying we'd be crazy to do an appointment. So I guess we're crazy either way. The money, but here are some of my considerations. The money is not, to me, the biggest obstacle because we spend, I could name things, but we spend a lot of money on a lot of things. The biggest consideration for me is whether the steps we take are considered legitimate by as many residents as possible. The, the timing for a special election is not, you know, somebody wouldn't be seated clearly as quickly, but it's also not as big an obstacle for me. You know, we have so many recusals. We're often operating with only six or fewer people. So if you, we're expecting to add somebody very quickly as a tiebreaker. I'm sure as soon as we do that, another of us will disappear and we'll be back to six people again. So, uh, so on the other hand, so the big thing for me with the appointments is that we not, that we do something much more transparent and open to the public and public input than our typical committee and commission appointment process. And I'm, I'm really pleased to have heard from two members of the public, the Chamber of Commerce and whoever Alex Brown was speaking up for, that they would be willing to hold some kind of forum, because I think that would be tremendously helpful. The, and, and I just wanna say, I've also been moved by the many thoughtful comments from residents on how to make any appointment process a more robust process. And after other people weigh in, you know, if we go down that route, I will, I'll be adding comments about how to make the appointment process more robust. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maticek.
Thank you. I have a question, and then I have a couple of comments. But my question is, I had the opportunity to speak with our city attorney for a while today, and I asked a lot of questions, some of which you also asked tonight. And it was a really good discussion, I thought. But my takeaway from it, and correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney, was that if we go the appointment route, we're really focusing on qualifications for, to serve on the council. And, you know, I took that to mean things like, do you understand how the city works? And do you know the Brown Act? You know, do you know how this all functions? Are you up to speed on everything? Rather than things like, how do you feel about a specific issue? And, and I guess I, you know, there were a lot of comments about forums and other things where, and questions we might wanna ask, that I felt like kinda got more toward the issue area. And so I guess I, I'd like some clarification on, you know, should, do we really focus on qualifications? Can we get into the issues? Just some guidance on that, if we go the appointment route. And if, you know, the city does something to sponsor like a forum or something.
Thank you. I'm happy to address that question. So I do, this is, this is a unique situation in that it is an appointed, you, you would be making an appointment to a typically elected seat. And like I said, in elections, they're very different. You know, the issues, your positions on particular issues, they all matter. The voters have a right to take all that into consideration when you are, when they are voting for a particular candidate. In this appointment situation, the, it is, it is akin to a job application. And so with that in mind, you do need to have set some parameters where you are really focusing on the qualifications of the candidate, can this, or the applicant, I'm sorry. Can this person come in and do the job? If there are particular issues that, you know, members of the public would like to, you know, hear about, you could certainly include questions that, that address some of the issues. I mean, it is, it's not, it's public knowledge, what, you know, some of the issues and things that the city will be doing moving forward. And so you could certainly include questions that are, that are issue-based. But again, I think that, you know, you ask that question of all the candidates so that you're getting that answer from all the candidates. And it's, you know, it's not, it would be as much about the quality of the response and their preparedness and how much they know about the city as it would be the position they took on the issue that I think you would be considering. So there is definitely a way to balance their, their, their views on issues with their, their thoroughness and their ability to articulate and understand the job of a council member. So there is definitely a balance there. It's, I'm not, you know, I didn't intend to say that you can't address the issues, but, you know, the question should be across the board to all the candidates. So if there is a particular issue you wanna address, you, you should frame, you know, you should prepare those questions in advance so that everyone, is, is that helpful?
Thank you. I appreciate that. You know, and so moving on to a comment or two. Like others have mentioned, I'm not really thrilled that we're at this point. And all the paths that we have to fill the vacancy have pros and cons. There really is not a perfect path from my perspective. And so this is really challenging, and I think this is one of the most critical decisions that we're gonna be making in a, in a long time. Certainly from my perspective, for me, it's a very critical decision. So I agree with the residents who spoke up tonight saying that they thought that they should be the ones to select the person who fills the vacancy. And so I would prefer that we do an election. I can see where some might think that a special election, given the short timeframe, puts some people at a disadvantage who might run. But an election in November is quite a ways out there. And, and so, you know, like I said before, there really is no perfect path here for us to choose. And I also understand the hesitancy to spend a lot of money. But as was mentioned, you know, we do spend money on important things, and this is certainly an important topic. So I don't want to, you know, have that be the primary focus. For me, the primary focus is letting residents choose who should fill the vacancy. If we did go the appointment route, because I heard a lot of people ask questions about that and some expressed preference for it, I feel very strongly that we should appoint somebody who is not going to run for council in 2024. And I'm saying that because an incumbent has a distinct advantage in an election. And that person would then be an incumbent and would have that advantage. I don't think it's up to us to make somebody an incumbent. I think that's up to the residents to do that. And I don't really feel like a council seat should be handed to anybody. I think they need to earn it. So to be fair to our residents, even though it takes a little bit longer time, I do think a special election is the way to go. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Avi Toga.
Thank you, Mayor. I very much appreciate the discussion we've had. And, you know, I will be honest and say that I've gone back and forth on the other appointment or election, special election process. And I very much appreciate the public who have sent in emails and spoken up today. I have similar sentiments as has been expressed by councilmember Maticek and councilmember, or Vice Mayor Hicks. For me, I, I feel, and, you know, having gone up for election many times for this position, I, you know, consider the job, the job of a council member extremely important and is a high honor. And what makes it that way is that the people of the city vote us in. And so when I think about our decision today, I've been trying to, you know, trying to decide how I could best carry out the will of the voters who I was elected to represent. And I think, and I've learned a lot, you know, there are a lot of, frankly, assumptions based on what I was seeing at other cities that are going through similar, similar decision-making. And the staff report and, and our staff, having done the research, actually came up with different answers to some of the questions or defunct some of the assumptions I had about the process. So that is also, you know, weighed obviously and where I'm leaning on, on this. I feel that the challenge here, there's a challenge of time. And, and, you know, I, I understand the concern of cost. As someone who's, you know, always minding our budget, that, that is a concern to me. But as, as Vice Mayor mentioned, you know, we've been fortunate to be in a place where we have funds to do many things, and we've spent funds on many different things. And I think, you know, this is an important function that is worth the funding. And so I am leaning towards a special election, mainly because I think it's important that the will of the voters be heard. And I'm not frankly confident that, given the short timeframe of an appointment process, we would have adequate, be able to adequately do that. I agree as councilmember Kamay's concerns about public input. I think that is really important. But, you know, with three weeks, I, I just don't know how much of that we're gonna get and, and then, you know, have to base a decision on that. I also think that, you know, it was mentioned that we should focus on qualifications. But, you know, frankly, where you're all elected or a council member is elected for many different reasons, qualifications might be one of them, but there are many other reasons why, why certain members are elected. And so to just focus on that, I think, would be, you know, would be incomplete. And so, and as we heard, I really appreciate the many different questions that the public suggest, members suggested. I agree, I think we should be asking a lot of those questions. But again, I think about just the reality that pragmatically, how could we do that in this very short timeframe of three weeks? Or, you know, an interview process where you have maybe an hour to interview one person? I think, you know, that would be frankly generous if we can do that. So in light of all that, I, again, I think that the prudent way to go would be to hold a special election. Now, I appreciate staff's concerns about time and workload and being mindful of our, you know, summer vacation. But as councilmember Sholter mentioned, there have been many years where we've called special meetings even through the summer. I think the most we had was in 2014. I would think we had like 58 meetings that year. So I, you know, I don't think that should hold us back. And I would like to try to move up the election sooner so that we don't have the vacancy as long. And so I, I would propose that we try to move it up to sometime in June. And that would then, you know, we would have to probably come back in July to certify the election. But at least too, if there's some, you know, sense of who might be elected, that person can start working to get up to speed, like, just like we do when we're elected in November. We have a couple of months to orient ourselves and learn about the, you know, departments and whatnot. So I, that would give that person time to do all that rather than waiting until August and when we come back into session at the end of August. So my, I would suggest we move it up to June, the earliest we can in June. Doesn't have to be the first week, but whatever we can do in June. I know that that leaves the vacancy for a few months, but I think that just means that we, as the six of us, will work, will have to work harder to build consensus and maybe compromise. And I kind of look at, look forward to that because, you know, perhaps that will actually bring us closer together. So, you know, I, I think that's something that we could very much overcome with all of our, you know, concerted effort. So that is where my position is, that we do a special election and try to hold it earlier in the June timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hicks.
So I said when I, I first spoke that I was open to both and gave the reasons why. Wanted to hear from other council members. Having heard from two, I am now leaning towards a special election. Although I also agreed with what councilmember Maticek said, that if we appoint someone, I would like them to, to promise not to, not to run. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the council who would like to speak? I can take that, oh, councilmember Sholter.
One of the things that concerns me about a special election, besides the, the time and effort that it takes and, and the money, of course, is the low turnout that is typically brought about by special elections. Usually they have about half, my understanding is they have about half to a quarter as many people as vote in regular elections. And that's, that's something that, that really does concern me. So I, you know, I wanna bring that up as an issue. And then the other thing is, I, I think that we have a lot on our work plate. We, we hear continuously from the staff about how, how they, there's, you know, there's so much that we need to do. And sometimes I, I think we hear it enough that we feel a little bit like it's Wolf Wolf. But I don't really think that's the case. I do think that our, our council has a tremendous amount of important policy issues to weigh in on and concentrate on. So having that hole in our group for six or eight months, I, I find worrisome. And I, I know I've, I've observed over the, having lived in Mountain View a long time, I have observed that both processes have worked well. You know, the appointment process has worked well. We've gotten a lot, one of the things that Mountain View is blessed with is, I think, is that a lot of really qualified people step up to be part of our committees, to be part of council. And so I think that, you know, either way, we will get really good candidates. And, but I wanted to bring up the issue of a very low turnout for a special election because I think that it, it, it's one of the, you know, it's just one of the practical problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kamay.
Great. Thank, thank you so much, Mayor. Really appreciate the, the comments from the public and staff's analysis on this. And a short turnaround, I think, as was expressed by some of my colleagues, this is a very challenging position that, that council has put in. And I think that that is something that we, we hadn't necessarily anticipated, but that's something that, that's part of coming along with council, is we're often put in situations where we need to, to make the best decisions we can for residents. And, you know, I'd like to take a step back and say, you know, if the time period on the vacancy was different, it would trigger the special election. But given that we're at about two years left on councilmember Lieber's term, we do have the option of going special election or an appointment process. You know, another part is that since we are two years out from any type of general election, we don't really have the opportunity. You know, another part is that since we are two years out from any type of general election, we don't really have the opportunity for consolidation into a municipal, a general municipal election. The only oppor, option really is, is the special election. So I think the, the timing also, um, is something that affects my, my viewpoint. Given all of these factors, I am leaning towards the appointment process and I'd like to outline why. The, should we not go the appointment process? This seat would sit vacant for about nine months. To me, that is much more than a recusal, which, uh, you know, I don't live in the downtown, so that doesn't happen very often for me. So I find it, you know, an infrequent occurrence. That's also 75% of the year to have that seat vacant until September. We just received our tentative of agenda list, which has many important and critical policy decisions that I believe we need a full council to discuss. Those include our housing policy, housing element, our upcoming budget process, our displacement response strategy that we've been talking about for the last four years. Our historic preservation ordinance is finally coming back, which we've also been talking about for four years. We've also been talking about expanding our safe parking program. All of these things I think are really critical policy topics that we need a full council to discuss. We also don't have an opportunity to appoint an interim, which is also why I'm leaning towards the appointment process. They do feel that we need represent, a full and representative council to discuss these issues. We also are looking at a potential of over $2 million for a special election. And while we have been in a very fortunate fiscal, um, position for the last several decades and even how we were able to allocate our ARPA funding, that ARPA funding was one time and we are discussing the potential of facing another recession. And as we are seeing layoffs all throughout our state and our region, I find this fiscal uncertainty something that we really need to take heed to. We also know that given the registrar of voter data, which I did reach out to Shannon Boucher and her staff to ask, in a regular general election, the turnout is typically 60 to 70%. In a special election, the low voter turnout is anywhere to 25 to 35%. And that's usually, uh, you usually see a low voter turnout from hard to reach communities. The registrar of voters isn't able to share disaggregated data because it's considered unreliable. But given that we have the most recent 2020 data, we'll know that people could be, um, not being able to participate as fully as they like. So for those reasons, I'm leaning towards the appointment process and happy to discuss further. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I agree with Councilmember Kamay and Councilmember Shawalter very strongly. And I feel the familiarity of having fought this battle in my day job and now having to fight it again. I, there are many good reasons why an appointment process is appropriate, as articulated by my colleagues. But the biggest one in my mind is the cost.
We can't hear you, Mayor.
My audio fell off. Can you hear me? I'm so sorry about that. I've got technical challenges galore going on. If I cease to be, uh, understandable, please let me know and I will call in. But I, uh, I'm, so I, I agree with Councilmember Kamay and Councilmember Shawalter. I think they've each given, uh, several strong reasons why, you know, process is appropriate. In my mind, the strongest, the most compelling reason is the cost. Can't justify, can't defend spending $2.1 million on a special election. It's an extraordinary expenditure. And we'll have to, we'll be accountable to our constituents. Why didn't we spend that money on capital improvements? Why didn't we spend that money on filling the vacancies among our staffing? And as Councilmember Kamay rightly pointed out, a lot of our one-time funding, which was so critical to sustain us through the pandemic, is gone. And now it's all our general fund that sustains us. And I worry, just as Councilmember Kamay has said, that if we do find ourselves in a recession, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions. And it would be really nice to have $2.1 million in a reserve or available and, you know, some other, fund for things that our community actually will, will need during a, a difficult period of time. I, I, I find it so difficult to, to make any case at all for spending that much money on a special election, especially in a special election. When I know we will have many qualified, capable and compassionate and good people who are interested in this role, who will apply. I have absolute confidence in this council and selecting someone who can do a good job, who can work with us, make good decisions. It's not to say that I don't trust the voters in making a good choice. The voters picked all of us, you know, so I would hope that they would continue to make a decision. But, uh, we have to be mindful, just as Councilmember Shawalter and Councilmember Kamay said, that the turnout will be low. And that means some members of our community will pick, the council member who will represent every member of the community. And not even close to a majority will be able, will likely weigh in. And that's a big problem to me. So I, I could not, uh, under any circumstances support a special election. I just don't think there's, there's a compelling argument for, for that amount of money to be spent. Especially when we have many good people in our community who I think are ready to step up and fill the vacancy and serve from day one. And not have a risk, you know, a six-member council for nine, nine months or more. We do decide to consolidate, you know, for basically the full year. Councilmember Shawalter, you're next.
I'll be quick. Um, another thing I would just like to bring up is I think that one of the most important meetings that we'll have, um, in, uh, in, in this, uh, one of the most important things that will happen this year is our goal-setting meeting. We do that every two years. And, um, uh, I think the longer I'm on council, the more important I understand this process to be. So, um, having, uh, a full council to take part in that and to weigh what our priorities should be. I think that that's very, very important. And getting that seat filled in time so that, um, the additional person can join us for that, um, uh, is, uh, will really allow us to do a better job for the people in Mountain View.
Thank you. Councilmember Obikoga.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, you know, I definitely appreciate the comments that were made. My, I would, wanted to just, um, you know, um, offer my take. In terms of low voter turnout, um, you know, I've, I, I watch each election and, um, even during our general elections, we've had years when we have 93% turnout. And then back in 2014, we had, I think, the lowest, at least in the modern times, about 57% turnout in a general election year. So, um, you know, as much as I appreciate the, the concern about a special election having even lower, um, which is possible. You know, I, I still believe in giving the voters that, that cho, choice. You know, whether it's 20, 30, 40, 50% of the voting population, that's frankly more than six of us. And I think that's what the voter, the, the residents, at least, you know, the ones who've spoken. I, I haven't heard too many folks. I think there was one today who said, you know, they, they, they're concerned about the money and should do appointment. But I've, I appreciate those who have given, entrusted in us the decision-making. But I see here have heard, I think, from more folks who want the opportunity to vote and to choose. And, and that's what I think is worth two point, whatever it is. And 2.1 million, I know, I know is what we've been, um, told. I think in past elections, since usually that price comes down, um, so we're not really sure. And in terms of where that funding would come from, you know, we have been fortunate. You know, I am very mindful, as you all know, about fiscal responsibility. I think I am probably the most, uh, you know, and I've been ridiculed at times for being too cautious. But, um, I also know that because of that, we have, um, saved up money and we have a lot of reserve funds and, and funds that, um, we have, you know, just, yeah, in case we want to do something. And so I think this is something worth doing and, um, important for, you know, the voters to just have that choice. So that, um, you know, I, I make a strong argument that it is worth the money to have this special election. And, you know, I keep hearing the nine months and whatnots, but I would hope that folks would agree and would be willing to put in the extra meetings that we might need to do to make this, um, election happen sooner if we can. I'm certainly willing to, you know, I've done it in the past for general, the general, um, plan updates and everything else we've done. So yes, it's gonna take us a more effort, more time and will take some money. But I just really believe very strongly, and especially in this ti, day and time, you know, where, when we talk about democracy being at a threatened. I think this is really important for us to give the voters the opportunity to vote. So, um, you know, I, I, I still stand by that option. I will say if we do go to an appointment process, I do agree with, um, Councilmember Matichak and Vice Mayor that I would, uh, like to appoint someone who will commit to only doing the remainder of, uh, Sally's term. And, um, you know, as I think Councilmember Matichak mentioned, we had to run and we had to earn this. And I take that very, very seriously. So I want, you know, as fair a playing field as possible and folks who are willing to put in that commitment to, to run for office without, you know, a leg up in any way, um, to try to give everyone a fair shot. So I would, um, hope that we would select someone who would be willing to commit to, um, being there for just the two years or the remainder of the term. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Matichak.
Well, uh, Councilmember Obikoga just pretty much said everything I was thinking. And I think, you know, the key points for me are, you know, even if there is low voter turnout, as she said, it's more than the six of us. Um, I'm sure there's gonna be more than six people voting. And I think that's really important. This is such an important role, um, that residents should have the opportunity to decide who the person is. And I'm not too concerned about having a vacancy for a while. I think the six of us, um, can, um, work through issues. And as I think it was the Vice Mayor who said, you know, with the number of recusals we have, you know, we often have less than a full council. So I, I think we can still function very well, um, with fewer people. You know, the cost, this is an important topic. I think it's worth the money, um, to allow our residents to make the decision rather than us. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hicks.
So I'll keep it short. I, you know, I, I do, I think the point that, um, about low voter turnout and that, um, you know, low-income people and people of color are less likely to vote. And I would add kind of, uh, maybe campaign exhaustion of people who volunteer frequently for campaigns. You know, those to me are the most salient points that have been, uh, brought up. I, I really don't think that the difference between, you know, many councils have, have five people on them. I don't think that the issues that we grapple with need a full seven people. It's nice to have, uh, you know, like it would be nice right now to have, uh, uh, seventh person to be a tiebreaker here. So, so that, that can be useful, but other than that, I, I don't really think that, um, you know, we need to pick someone because we can't grapple with issues as only three, uh, it's only six of us. And the thing, I have to say, the thing that is most unconvincing to me is the goals and work plan. Because I honestly, I think that, um, we, our, our work plan has been overfull. And those of us who have run have gotten to put very few things on. And particularly in addition because of COVID, uh, you know, I feel like I've run and, and I promised people things. And I've run twice and barely been able to do any of the things I promised. Um, and the thing I would dislike the most is if we appointed someone who was aggressively trying to add to the work plan. In my opinion, someone who's non-elected should not try to add at all. So, um, so those are, those are the things that, you know, those, those are the additional things that I would, uh, weigh in on. I do also agree if we make an appointment, we should, um, it, it should be a person who promises not to run again. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for staff. So first, there is a, a staff workload impact conducting a special election. It might be helpful for us to understand what that impact will be.
Well, you know, every general election, we dedicate all of those months to shepherding the process and helping candidates and running a nomination period and, and doing all of that. So, um, there will definitely be a strain on, on our, you know, the city clerk's office resources. Because when we would normally be catching up on things that we set aside for the general municipal election, um, we're gonna be running it, you know, we're turning right back around and running another election. So, um, there's that. And, um, to the question of June versus August, moving that deadline up will have other consequences for our, for our office as well.
Would you characterize the impact as trivial, moderate, or significant?
I would say that it's moderate.
Moderate, okay. So I think, um, Councilmember Kamay had some facts and figures about turnout. Do we happen to know turnout in Mountain View in special elections?
Uh, I went back through, so, so, you know, when I was doing the presentation, I noted that the special, the only special election that was used to fill a vacancy in the past 44 years was in 85. That was on a July 16 day. So it was, you know, didn't align with anything the council picked a specific day it wanted to have the election. And that turnout was 12.9%.
Very high 12.9%. I'm sure. Thank you. Okay. Uh, and then I, I was, I, I know, we haven't selected a particular procedure yet since it's come up multiple times. This, this came up in the sense of city attorney. Can we legally ask people or, um, hold, can we require that an applicant, uh, not run in a fall of an election?
I did some quick research on that today and I do not think you can legally prevent them from running in 2024. They can make a promise and still run. I also think, you know, I'm not, I don't think it's a good idea to ask that as a, as an interview question. Do you plan to run? It has nothing to do with an applicant's qualifications to do the job or even their positions on a particular issue. I, I completely understand the sentiments that, you know, it creates, um, an incumbent. And I do understand that incumbents do tend to have advantages in, you know, they're, they're known in elections. But I just don't see how you can legally prevent someone from running.
That was the conclusion in, in the sense as well. Just suppose bodes well for a six-member council for the next year. That's your matter of fact.
So just, um, going further into the issue of, um, commitments to run again or not if they're appointed. I believe in Sunnyvale, they were able to get someone who committed not to run to, uh, and to say that. And I understand we can't legally require it, but there must be some way that we can ask that, um, of the applicants. Yeah, because I, Sunny Yeah, because Sunnyvale seemed to have been able to do something there. So can we at least ask the question? I guess that would be the question.
Did Sunnyvale ask that question?
And I don't know if they asked the question, but from what I was heard told, the person who they chose, well, it sounded like they were looking for someone who wanted, was gonna just do the two years, and that's who they picked.
You know, an applicant can state that they will not run again or run in twenty twenty-four. They can make that promise. They can make that assurance. That is their, their right. Asking that question and, and then making a decision where you have two perfectly qualified candidates for a position, and one says they're not going to run and one says they are going to run. And that is the sole basis for excluding someone from this council, I think creates potential problems for this council. So, I mean, you, I think it's risky. I think it is, it has nothing to do with the applicant's qualifications to serve as a council member. And so I do think that trying to exact that kind of promise from an applicant would create a legal issue. But if they voluntarily state it, you know, that's their right.
Thank you. And Sunnyvale also has the, again, the peculiarity of having gone from at-large elections to district elections. And in case the, they were feeling to balancing the balance of an unexpendable at-large term. Because of this issue, chose somebody who would be eligible for, for districts. They were a member of the council who was outside the district. That's the districts that were, that were for election. Councilmember Maticek.
Thanks. So if I recall correctly, Sunnyvale did not ask all councilmen, all applicants the same questions. And they did ask one of the applicants if they were going to run. And that person's, I believe they said they were absolutely considering it. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hicks.
Yeah, I'm, so I'm getting, I have to say, a little bit troubled by the, when we talk about the application process, the lack of questions we're allowed to ask. Because I would hope that we would be able to ask that question about the person's thoughts on running without making it the sole criteria or, you know, one of the criteria. So that's one statement. And then there's also been, because I should say, one of the reasons I'm concerned is that I think that, I mean, the decision about who sits on council is essentially a political decision. I mean, I guess that's perfectly obvious. And the idea that we're picking someone just because they're qualified kind of boggles my mind. I don't even really know what that means. I would think, you know, a good, I don't know. The adults in my own view are probably qualified. But, you know, to Zoom or come into meetings, read the staff reports and make thoughtful comments. So I'm, but I do think, going back to something that we talked about earlier, whether we can ask questions that include issues comments. I think that, I'm hoping that we can in some way, at least in, if we do the application process, at least in the way that some of the residents or resident groups have submitted questions regarding things like the opinions of applicants on, or how the applicants would work through some of the upcoming issues on our work plan. And the reason that I'm hoping those are okay to ask is that I've been, you know, I've been living in this city for over twenty years. I've seen a lot of candidate forums. And sometimes when people address issues, questions, it's quite clear they have no idea what they're talking about. And they just would not hit the ground running. And it doesn't really matter what my opinion is on that particular issue. I can tell they don't know what they're talking about and they haven't been engaged. So I do, so at the very least, if we end up going with the application process, I would like to hear people grapple with some of the things that are upcoming on our, you know, on our work plans so that I, okay, I'm going to repeat myself now, but so that I know that they can hit the ground running. And then I do, you know, I continue to have the question of whether we can at least raise what the person thinks about whether they would be running again. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments or questions for members of the council? I guess in direct response to your last point, Vice Mayor Hicks, I'm, I agree that I think we have to be very thoughtful. Should there be four votes for an appointment process? We'd like to be very thoughtful about the questions that we ask, you know, and there are some pretty clear legal guardrails that I think the City Attorney has outlined. And so be mindful of those. Again, should we decide to pursue an appointment process, I can make sure that we're, we're getting the information that we need from the applicants to make a good decision. City Attorney?
I just want to provide a little clarification. I agree that it is, it is a political position. You do not have to limit the questions that you ask to only qualification type questions. You can get at the issues that are important to Mountain View residents. I think that is totally reasonable, you know, and as I noted earlier, I think that you should just make sure that the questions are the same for all candidates so that the process itself is fair and equitable. You know, but I think you can get at the issues. If you want to ask the question about whether or not they are going to run again, I think that you can ask the question. I was just presenting a potential legal risk to asking that question. You know, should, should one or more of the candidates have a problem with that question? But I think you can ask the question. There, there's, it's, you know, I was just advising on, you know, how best to handle the situation fairly and whether or not someone is going to run again doesn't really go towards their ability to serve the city. And maybe they come in and do a fantastic job. And, you know, if they run as an incumbent, then that's great. They come in and do a terrible job and run as an incumbent, and maybe they don't get elected. I think it can play out many ways. So I think you can ask the question. I just wanted to, you know, alert you to the potential issues that could arise with that question.
Thank you. That's helpful. And again, should we decide to pursue an appointment process, I'm hoping personally that we can set aside some additional time to think about the questions that we might ask and solicit community. And that would be an opportunity also, I think, City Attorney, for us to revisit the issue of what can we ask and what are we, where is there a legal risk in asking certain types of questions? Councilmember Shawalter.
Well, just one thing, that talking about the advantage of incumbency, it is an advantage. But I just, you know, I'm an example that it doesn't always work. So I, you know, I just think that there is quite a bit of variation in the number of people that run in an election. And in the two thousand twenty-four election for city council, there will be four openings. So there will be at least, at least two new openings. And at least based on my observation, every time we have an election where there are a number of openings, we have a lot of people that come forward. So I think the idea that having an additional person who, who is an incumbent would mean we have a sleepy election is, I, that doesn't ring true to me at all. I, it seems like when we have a few slots open on this council, we normally have, you know, a really healthy group, like five to ten people who come forward to, to, I would think with four, we would easily have ten candidates. So that worry about, you know, about the incumbency, I don't think it's as important in this particular instance because of where we are as it would be sometimes. Because we will have at least two new members on the council after the twenty twenty-four election. And then the other thing I would like to say is that there are several things that I think that we should, if we do go the appointment route, which I hope we will, that we should add to what we want to be included in the letter. Because it's, it's just really open-ended right now. And we've gotten a lot of good input from the public about things that we should ask about. And that is, you know, asking people to include that information in their letter of interest, I think, would be very appropriate. Or, or to answer the questions as, you know, as a separate, a separate document. That also would be completely appropriate. So I, I would hope that we would, you know, that will guarantee that the process is fair and that everyone is asked the same questions and that we, and that the information is available before the interviews to help us make decisions. So anyway, I just wanted to bring up that incumbency does not always guarantee that you will be reelected. And I'm, but I am very grateful to the people of Mountain View for having elected me again. It's an honor and I very much enjoy this process.
Thank you. Councilmember Abecoga.
Thank you, Mayor, and I don't want to drag this on too long, but I guess I, you know, had wanted to respond. And, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Shawalter, your comments. Yeah, and we can quarter back all we want, but I do think that what I've seen is when there's a lot of candidates, incumbency, it does end up helping more because there's a name ID factor in elections. And when you have a lot of people, folks tend to pick out the names that they know. And incumbents tend to have a bigger advantage there. So in that sense, I think this would matter more in this situation. But in regards to the application, I do agree. I think the more questions we can ask, the better. And again, I go back to, people are elected to council for, you know, very different reasons. Qualifications is one of them maybe, but not the only thing. And so I think the more questions we can ask. And then I do think we could go ahead and ask the question of what, you know, whether they're willing to serve just the remainder of the term. And knowing that with more, more robust questions, that wouldn't be the only factor in our decision-making. I think if we had five questions and that was one of them, there would be more of a case to say, oh, you know, that was the reason why this, a person was selected. But if we have more questions to, to help us with our decision-making, then I think that kind of waters down the importance of that question. So that's another, you know, reason I'd say to, one, include that, the question, and then just make sure we have more questions to try to really, frankly, the key here is to try to get as, you know, as well-rounded a picture of the individual as we can despite our limited time and other restraints. Thanks.
Thank you. So we will, Councilmember Kame.
Oh, no, go, no, head, Mayor, I can, I can wait.
I was gonna make an attempt at a compromise because I, I think, I think there could be a path to a majority for an appointment process if we make some commitments about having a very thoughtful and robust opportunity to ask questions in the application and also in the interview. And I, I was hoping that maybe we can find a majority if, if we provide, you know, two commitments, right? And that would be first, you know, we'll have a lengthy discussion about which questions to include in the application. And then because we'll have more time to decide which questions to ask in the interview, maybe we can ask the City Attorney to maybe do a little bit more research and provide some information to the council about the legal risk or, or our ability to ask a question like, you know, would you run for election in twenty twenty-four if you are? Maybe that can give us some comfort about conducting the appointment process and making sure that we have the information that we need. Understanding that we couldn't only make a decision about that one point, but that, you know, it does contribute to a more holistic understanding of the governance. So just an idea, but I'll go to Councilmember.
Great. Thanks so much, Mayor. Appreciate your, your efforts for a compromise. I think I was gonna try to go down that route too. You know, as I was saying in my opening comments, I think we're in a really challenging situation. And if circumstances were different, we may all have, you know, switched opinions or different opinions. But kind of given the timeline and the, you know, for me, it's a lot of different factors. But, you know, what I think is best is the appointment process. But I think despite me supporting that, or, and in that vein, I'd really like it to be an open and transparent process. In a way, I feel like this is an opportunity that maybe we don't always get in elections in terms of the public being able to weigh in on the questions that council asks. And that's kind of why I asked the line of questioning earlier on in the evening, which is, I really do feel that having an open, public, transparent process is something that's really critical. And, you know, and not necessarily having it through a special election, but still having that input process. And so I was heartened to hear both the public comment from residents saying, you know, for, for some of us, we elected you, you know, just almost two months ago, and we support you and the hard decisions that you have to make. But also that they know that we make tough decisions on council frequently. And that they know that they will have an opportunity to weigh in. And so I do want and liked staff suggestion that at the meeting on the twenty-fourth, that people would be able, that council would be able to finalize the questions that we would ask either at the twenty-fifth or the thirtieth. I really appreciate, similar to elections, the, the public can hold forums at any time and can invite the potential applicants to them. And so those can happen independently of the city and of council. And I really appreciate the offers and the public comment that those opportunities would exist. So I do feel like there are paths for democracy to work out, to be in action in a timeline that doesn't leave a vacancy for, for nine months. To me, that is a long time when we're talking about really critical policy issues. And in a way, Mountain View's been, been a leader and I want us to continue to do that. And we, so, so I'm hopeful that we can augment both the application and the questions along the process and have people be able to weigh in despite the quick turnaround. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Abecoga.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess I wanted to ask if we can just take a, you know, hand vote. And I wanted to pose the other, the other option of doing a special election, but in June, not in August, and move up the timeline. So if we can just do a vote and see where we are, and then we can go to the next discussion, I would appreciate that.
Let's have Councilmember Maticek provide comments. And if there are no others, then we can start on taking straw polls.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I actually think with an election, there's greater opportunity for public participation. And there are more forums, there is a longer period of time here, you can have conversations with the candidates. And in the end, it's up to the voters to decide as opposed to us. So I can't think of any other opportunity that is greater than allowing residents to vote for public input on this process and who is then representing them. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other hands up, I'll start with, as Councilmember Abecoga proposed, a straw poll on conducting a special election at least in June, right? And then if there is a majority support for that, then I'll ask if there is. Um, and then if there is a majority support for that, then I'll ask if there is support for uh, holding appointment process. And then we'll have another separate discussion about questions and, um, the selection process there. So first, um, raise your hand if you support conducting a special election in June to fill vacancy. Okay, there are three votes for that. Oh, which, uh, so it's, that's not the ration. Um, now raise your hand if you support conducting, uh, appointment process. Two, three, four. Okay, thank you. So there is majority support for conducting an appointment process. And now, um, we will discuss uh, the interview process and considerations, which are detailed in the staff report and include, um, I don't know if I have to ruin everything in the agenda, so, but there are a number of considerations that we will have to, uh, provide direction on. Some of these, I think we will have to determine, uh, tonight. And then others, I think we can wait until January twenty fourth, um, in the next uh, council meeting where we're conducting a, a business to provide some direction where, um, we've, where there isn't a, a time constraint. Uh, and so that might include, for instance, whether the interviews, well, I guess we, we should probably determine whether they're in person or, or I assume tonight, but the interview questions, for instance, we can safely, I think, postpone, um, until later. Um, so would any member of the council like to ask questions or provide input on the appointment process?
So one of the things I would really like to add to the application is whether the person has, we do this with the committees and commissions, um, whether they've ever been to a council meeting or perhaps a certain, I, I don't have the details on how I would, maybe there's additional input people can have on how to phrase this. Um, the committees and commissions ask, have you ever been? And then ask the number that you've been to. Um, my, the reason I want to ask this, I actually think we could make a requirement for committees and commissions, but um, is something that people spoke about earlier is that, um, that, uh, we could, there's the potential to get, because this sounds like an easy route to get on council. There's the potential to get, who knows how many applications, ten, twenty, thirty applications and then have to interview everyone. And I frankly don't want to interview somebody who's never been to a council meeting. Um, I don't know if I even want to interview somebody who's been to fewer than three council meetings, but other people can weigh in on that. I would like that to be, in terms of qualifications, I would like that to, that is one qualification I would have. I would like to know, um, whether the, the applicants have been to a certain number of council meetings.
So I think what I'm gonna try and do, and I will need some help, is, uh, writing down suggested questions as I hear them. Uh, because a majority of the council will have to provide direction on which questions to include in the application process. And I want to make sure that there's majority support for each question. So Vice Mayor Hicks, if I heard correctly, the question we would ask on the application is, how many council meetings have you attended or observed?
Yeah, have you, I don't know whether, oh, one or the other word is more correct, attended or observed. But I, yeah, and I don't also know whether that's a way of, uh, posing it as criteria. Maybe, um, our city attorney can weigh in on that. And I also don't know whether there's a way of holding, you know, if we had a, a requisite threshold for a number, whether there's any way of checking up on whether the person had actually done it. So it may be, uh, you know, word of honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Madichak.
Thanks. Um, you know, initially I was kind of surprised that, um, um, we might just ask uh, for a letter. But then the more I thought about it, the more I thought, well, you know, maybe that's not too bad because then we'll see what they want us to know about them, um, without forcing them to, um, answers other specific questions. Um, but, um, there are a couple of fundamental questions for me that I was thinking I would want to ask during the interviews, but I'm okay if you want to put them in the application. And one is, um, you know, why do you want to be appointed to the council? And, um, along with that, I would say, um, why do you think you are the most qualified to be appointed? And that might take a little bit of thought that maybe, um, is more appropriate in the questionnaire or the application than in the interview. I would also want to know, um, I don't necessarily want to know the details, but I would want to know if there are any issues where they fundamentally disagree with the direction the council has chosen and would want to see something different and why. Um, but I don't want a ton of details on that. I just want to, more than anything else, I want to know, um, are they going to try to change something? I guess is the upshot of that. A decision that we've already made. Um, I also would like to know, um, what their top priorities are. And how do you propose they get tackled? Um, which I think is different than the challenges that the city might be facing. Um, because your priorities might be different than some of the challenges we're working on. And I'm not really sure. I need to know about, um, yourself and your background or how you entered, um, how you got involved in local politics. Um, so I think I could drop those from either the interview questions or the application. I kind of feel like I'm not totally, um, hung up on which ones go in the application and which ones we ask. There's a couple that I think are more appropriate for one place or the other. So I apologize if I'm mixing them here, but I, I'm not totally hung up on one venue or the other. Thanks.
Thank you. And, uh, if, if one question isn't included in, in the application, we could always include it in the interviews. Um, uh, at the, at the time. Um, I just wanted to make sure I captured the questions that you are recommending. Um, and they would include something along the lines of, why do you want to be appointed to the council? Why do you believe you are the most qualified to serve? Uh, what are your top priorities and how would they get tackled? And then, um, share any, uh, significant disagreements you may have with previous council direction.
Yeah, I guess I characterize that more of, um, like, future, like the direction this council has set for the future. Um, those decisions as opposed to, um, looking back, um, to something that's already been completed, so to speak. So the current issues we're facing and the decisions we've made that are, you know, starting to get implemented. Thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Shawalter.
Thank you, Councilmember, um, Madichak for those comments. That was very interesting. Um, just kind of adding on to that, a- a- and also, um, Vice Mayor Hicks. I, I was thinking along this, the city council, um, uh, I, I was thinking of adding these things, including them in the letter, you know, that, that's, um, I, I was thinking we would just have a, a list of things we would like the letter to deal with. Um, but that doesn't mean that that limits what the letter says. And maybe we want to say the letter can only be, I don't know, a thousand words or something, um, if we want to limit that, but, um, or maybe that's too many, maybe five hundred. I'm not sure what the number of words should be, but i- if there needs to be a limit, so we don't get twenty pages from anyone. Um, but, uh, I would, uh, I would like to know how many, um, council meetings people have attended and also what was their involvement generally in the council meeting? I mean, did they just sit there? Did they talk? Uh, you, you know, the, what, 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 what did they do? That, I think that would be interesting. Um, another thing that I would really like to, um, understand, kind of getting to that idea of, of, um, that Councilmember Madichak mentioned of, um, is it, do you think the council is on the right track? Is there something that we've done that you disagree with? Um, I, uh, uh, I, I, I think that that's, you know, that's a very interesting, um, question. And, uh, I, I would like to see something along those lines included. In addition to that, I am interested in having them discuss what the concept of a community for all means to them. That has been, that's a very, uh, important council goal, I think, to most of us. And, um, it is the kind of thing that, um, it have a lot of meanings. And what someone says about that is, I think, very telling about how, what, what have they thought about? How they want, what's their vision for the city and how, what kind of community we want to have, that sort of thing. So I think it's a very thought provoking question and I would like, I would like that to, um, be in the letter. You know, what does a community for all mean to you? And, um, or another way to just, if we didn't want to do that one, we could, we could just make it more general. Um, discuss one of the council goals and what it means to you and what do you think um, should be done to address it that isn't already being done. And, and then also, what do you think we should continue doing? Because I, I would really like to elicit, um, some information about the depth of knowledge and, um, Mountain View, uh, process and programs that, um, people come to, uh, uh, come to, uh, this application with. I think it's, it's really important, um, that they've you, you know, that they really know what we're working on and, um, they have ideas about it one way or the other. And, um, then the other one I, I think would be a good thing to include in the letter is, what is the most serious social issue in Mountain View? And, um, how should we deal with it? So, um, those are just some thoughts. I'd be interested in hearing other people's.
Thank you. Um, there were many questions in there. Uh, Councilmember Shawalter, I'm gonna do my best to summarize maybe some, um, high level, uh, questions that you've suggested. So the first was, what was your involvement in the council meetings you've attended? As a follow-up to, I believe there was Vice Mayor Hicks' suggestion. What does a community for all mean to you or mean for you? Or a broader version might be discuss one council goal and what it means to you. Um, and then, uh, what is the most serious issue, uh, in Mountain View? That we're addressing or not addressing, along those lines.
A serious social issue.
Social issue, thank you.
No, I think you've got it. Thank you.
No problem. And I suppose, um, you know, several good points have been made about asking these questions as suggestions for topics to include in a letter rather than having essays in response to each one of them. So we can decide whether to, to have a couple of application questions that everyone must respond to and then a more general letter that could include responses to these questions if the applicant wants serious consideration. Councilmember Kame.
Great, thank you. That, so that was gonna be my question, Mayor, was kind of what the package of the application would look like. So it sounds like there would be the personal information, the letter of interest, and it would be like free flowing topics that people can just expand upon as they wish. Is that, and we're giving bullet points on what they can talk about? I think for, for, for me, what, what I'd love to see is the, the application look a little bit more similar to EPC and that we get that we are able to ask a set of questions. So at least we have some questions that we know that we want answered. And then if they want to use the letter of interest to talk about these other topics, that's fine with me. But from what I saw of the draft sample attachment, it was just the personal information, you know, letter of interest and that looked kind of it. And so I would just like to expand upon it to kind of get more of the, the personal information, because I do think it includes, you know, have you ever attended a council meeting, some generic questions like that? That's already included when we have somebody apply for a border commission, which I would like. And then I do like the idea of a supplemental list of questions that perhaps the whole council can agree upon. Those can be, um, you know, even ones that the, the public suggested via email or tonight. Um, and then I, I like the idea of a letter of interest. It would be, for me, I, I would love to understand a little bit more about the potential person that we're, we're working with. We've often talked about how a lot of the things we do is, is together. It's, it's a group. And so in an interview process, you don't always have the opportunity to understand, um, someone's work style, um, or their background. I, I do find background important. I, I do find experience important. Um, those are the things that we talk about when we get elected. So I'd love to hear those things when someone gets appointed. Um, and so perhaps the letter of interest, um, can include that. So if, if council members are open to that, perhaps we can differentiate which would be the supplemental questions that would be standardized and then whi- which would be the topics for the letter of interest that would be helpful for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and I agree. So, uh, Vice Mayor Hicks, I'll, I'll take a very quick turn and then we'll, uh, go to you next. Uh, so I, I'm totally open to the questions that we ask explicitly and require responses to as part of the application. And a lot of these are great as prompts for the letter of interest, which I do support. The, the only thing I want to make sure that we do include is, uh, because I, I don't think we do this right now with the applications for the advisory bodies, but, um, some contact information that the applicant would understand is available to the public. Uh, so not to keep comparing us to the city of San Jose, but the list of applicants is now publicly available. And most have elected to provide either a phone number or an email address. And I really like that because that means members of the public get to reach out and say, hey, you know, I'm interested in learning more about you. What are your thoughts on items of interest? Uh, and I think right, I could be wrong, but I, I think right now the council gets to see the contact information. But I don't believe that the contact information is made available in the public. If I'm wrong about that, my apologies, but I think that's something we ought to consider, um, making explicit on the application. Vice Mayor Hicks.
So I agree with the direction this is going in. I, yes, I really would like some, uh, way that members of the public can contact the person. Of course, when we're candidates and when we're on council, we, um, we have to think to that. So the person, the applicants should be open to that as, as early as possible. I also like the idea of, of what, uh, Councilmember Kame said of making the application in some ways more similar to, uh, you know, a, a committee or commission application with some specific questions. Um, in my mind, the most important questions, and I, I don't really care whether this is on the application or a later question for the interview. Um, but what some members of the public have brought up, um, actually, I think it's people from, uh, livable Mountain View and from green spaces and from NBCSP brought up items that are on our work plan. And what, so they listed the, the, the two of them together, housing element displacement, downtown precise plan, Castro mall grade separation, uh, the park strategic plan, biodiversity plan, active transportation plan. I want some point where people can, um, it, it's less hearing maybe their position on, on each of those. I, I'm thinking probably most application, applicants are not anti-park, for example. Um, but maybe I'm wrong. Um, but just that they can engage with those issues. And that's, again, what I said earlier, that I've seen over the years when people are in forums, some people can engage very deeply on these things. And this is somebody who's gonna be on for two years dealing with the, these, I think, specific items. So I would like to know that they can engage. I think for me, that's sort of the basics for qualifications is how they engage on the, on the issues that we have coming up. So some way of, of including that. And then I also want us to address at some point what I think Councilmember Abicoga, um, addressed is, uh, is there a way in the process of eliminating people that we think are just not worth interviewing? So we don't end up. so that we can have a more thoughtful process with the number of people we do interview and not, uh, be obligated, obligated to interview whatever, thirty-five people or whatever. Thank you. Which might be the number of times, one step towards that might be the number of times they've attended council meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, um, I think that's one where we will probably need a lot of, uh, guidance from the city attorney. For whatever it's worth, um, in San Jose, I believe four members of the council have to express interest in interviewing an applicant in order for that applicant to be interviewed by the full council. Uh, and that's four out of a body of nine. Um, and then, now that's, that's a very superficial analysis. And I think, you know, the city attorney hopefully, uh, can, can provide some, and some whether that's risky or something that's perfectly acceptable. Council member Madacheck.
Yes, I think we need to define what it means to attend a council meeting also. Um, since, you know, you can watch them after the fact, uh, you can watch them live. In the past, you used to be able to come and sit in the council chambers. So I think we just need to be clear on what we're asking with that question. Um, uh, and I think, uh, the vice mayor's comment about, um, wanting to, uh, see whether or not they are up on an issue and how they engage, um, with it is important. And I think you get that better when you're talking to the person than if they're responding to a question. So I would tend to save those for the interview. Um, I, I do like, um, the idea of having some sort of process to narrow the, uh, number of applicants we consider. Um, and I think that's kind of an interesting one that, uh, at least a certain number of council members have to have an interest in talking with them. Hadn't thought of that. Um, but, um, maybe as we go through the questions, um, that people have posed, um, Mayor, we could decide if it's, uh, on the application or if it's, um, part of the interview process. Cause I think, um, we've sent, you've got a running list and I'm not sure I'm clear on which forum that you'd be in. Thanks.
Thank you. So I, I, I think just as one potential way of getting council input, I'll read each question and then we'll simply raise hands if we want it first, uh, as part of the application. And then if there's not a majority for the application, then I'll ask if it's appropriate for the interview. And then if it gets a majority there, then you can consider it as part of the interview questions. Um, so let's go to the city clerk first and then I'll go to you, Vice Mayor.
I was just gonna, um, interject that it would also be helpful if when you're determining if something's gonna be on the application, if it's gonna be one of the suggested topics for a letter of interest or if it's an actual question that you want them to write and answer, similar to, to the applications we have for advisory bodies now.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, and actually, I wanna go back very quickly. City Attorney, you had unmuted yourself. I think when I was talking about making publicly available some contact information, i- is there, is there any concern about that?
There wasn't. Sorry, that was an accident. No, I do not. If they voluntarily put something on there, I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Hicks.
Yeah, I just wanna ask if you can run through the questions super quickly. I don't know all of them, so I don't know, you know, if I'm voting on ones in the beginning, what, I don't know what the ones to come on. I've kind of, I've kind of lost track. Thank you.
No problem. I'm, I'm happy to do that. Uh, city manager?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I would just, uh, remind you all that you did have interest in adding a question about whether someone was gonna run for reelection in twenty-four. So I would just add that to your list. I didn't hear anyone say that in this round.
I, I, I will add that, I think, with an understanding that the city attorney is gonna do a little bit more research and details on, on how we can ask that question. Um, council member Madacheck?
Sorry, I had another question. Um, we really only have to decide on the application tonight, right? Um, okay, so I know I have other questions that I would wanna ask, but I think they're more appropriate in the interview. So I haven't, uh, brought those up. And that's okay, right? Cause we'll have a chance to do that on the twenty-fourth? For what day? Is that right?
Yeah, we're gonna, we, we, we can bring something back to you on the twenty-fourth so you can solidify interview questions. Um, but if you think there might be some crossover, just know that, you know, nothing would be able to change about the application. So if you wanna interject them now, that's up to you, but yeah.
Yeah, cause there are, um, topics, you know, if we wanna see if they're up to speed, like, I would like to know, um, what are their thoughts on livability? Um, and how to improve the quality of life for residents in Mountain View. Uh, similar to other issues that have been brought up. We've heard quite a few from residents that I think, you know, if we're gonna get into the issues, I'd wanna add, uh, but they're much more issue focused than, uh, some of the other ones we've talked about tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Council member Abicoga.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, I was going to suggest, um, maybe we, we go through all the questions. Um, because I, I guess I'm mostly, I'm concerned about the ti- issue of time with the interviews. So depending on how many questions we want to ask at the interview, it'll determine the length of the interviews or vice versa. And then, so then, um, you know, if there are other questions remaining, we could potentially put them in the application was how I was looking at it. Um, so I mean, I don't know what the best process is if we just lay out all the questions tonight and then figure out where we wanna put which question. Um, you know, there may be questions we just have to eliminate, but I think we need to kind of start to right pare down and figure out what the framework is in terms of like the number of questions and where they're gonna go.
It, it makes sense. And I, I think right now the plan is to have, um, an item on the January twenty-fourth agenda in case we need it. And we can decide if we wanna, for instance, if we wanna decide the interview questions tonight and then on the twenty-fourth, if those questions are fine, then we don't need to spend any more time on the twenty-fourth discussing it. If we wanna change questions or or additional questions that we wanna add because of public input, then at least we've got the placeholder item and on the twenty-fourth to discuss the interview questions further.
So do we mind to decide, you know, how many questions we're gonna put on the application or again, it's a length issue, right?
Yeah, we, I believe, uh, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we have to finalize the application questions tonight.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
Um, thank you, Mayor. For context, um, I'll just let council know that when we interview applicants for jobs with the city, um, typically if you have around ten to twelve questions, that is typically a thirty to forty-five minute interview. Um, sometimes the questions might be compound questions, meaning that it's one, it's like your first or second question, but it's really kind of a couple parts to that question. And that might take a little longer. So if that gives you context for how many questions you wanna ask and how long your interviews are. So if you are looking for, let's say, ten to fifteen minute interviews, then I would suggest probably no more than five questions. Um, and even that's gonna push it, depending on how, um, wordy people are, cause everyone interviews differently. Some people can get quickly to the answer and others take a little bit longer. But I, I would suggest if that's what you're kind of shooting for, ten to fifteen minutes, about five questions and then determining how many you wanna put in the application. If you feel like there's not enough to answer in the interview, then you can put those in the application or the interest letter.
Thank you. Let's hope for, are there any, I'm gonna read through the questions first. Are there any other questions or comments before I do? Okay, um, and again, if my audio ceases to be understandable, let me know. Um, so the questions are, how many council meetings have you attended or observed? Recognizing that we might want to better define what that means. What do you want, why, sorry, why do you want to be appointed to the council? Why do you believe you are the most qualified to serve? What are your top priorities and how would they get tackled? Uh, what are some examples of, uh, current or future issues we are facing where you disagree with council direction? What was your involvement in the council meetings you've attended? What does a community for all mean for you? Or, uh, discuss one council goal and what it means to you? What is the most serious social issue in Mountain View? Um, and then there's the question of whether, uh, an applicant is interested in running the twenty-twenty-four election pending additional patents from the city attorney. Were there any? Uh, uh, council member Kamai.
Thank you. Do you think that we might, so I guess two items. Do you think that we would be able to combine the, uh, meeting attendance or with the level of involvement in the meeting you attended? I think those can go, like all of that related to the, the meetings can go together. And then I, I forgot that I wanted to bring this up earlier. In the last rounds of, of EPC interviews, these last ones we just had and the, and the ones before, we asked about, I don't wanna say balance, but we did ask, um, how do you consider the input of residents? As well as, I think developers or, or something of, of that nature. Um, I'm interested in, in response to that question. Thanks. And perhaps if the, if the city clerk or somebody remembers what that question is, we could refresh. Thank you.
Uh, s- city clerk, are you in a position to, I, I, I guess we'll, we'll give you some time to, to find out if that's okay.
Yeah, let, let me, let me look at that. Hold on.
Okay, thank you. Council member Shaw Walter.
Yeah, I, I also thought that, um, there was a question that, that, uh, council member, uh, Madacheck asked about, is there a decision, a decision of the council that you fundamentally disagree with? And what would you want to change? Did I miss that?
Um, so, and what would you change? I did not explicitly include in the question, so I can add that.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear the other one. Thank you. Sorry. And, and then the other question I had, uh, for the clerk, um, when you were doing your research, did you, and, and we had the application procedure in the past, did you notice how many applicants there were? You know, we've been discussing how many people there might be to interview and that kind of stuff. I wondered if there was some history of how many people actually applied.
I was not able to find clear record on that.
Okay.
I'd love to have a different answer for that, but at this time, I, I, I couldn't tell you.
All right. Thought it was worth, worth a try to ask.
Thank you. Council member Madacheck.
So if we're gonna go the approach of, um, coming up with the first draft of, um, questions for the interview as well, um, then I do wanna add the one that was on the sample, which is, um, how can we enhance the city's livability and quality of life for our residents? Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hicks.
So I'm trying to figure out our, our next steps. I know you were gonna read them and we were gonna raise our hands, but, um, I'm, eh, there's a lot of questions here. And, uh, and so I'm trying, so we have the potential, okay, two of the questions seem like not, they're not essay questions or the way, well, they could be. Um, how many council meetings you've been to and your level of involvement and, um, are you considering running again? Could be long essay questions or they could just be when we do the, how many council meetings have you been to? Those are just checkbox questions on the, uh, council and committee. Uh, I mean, uh, commission and committee for the commission and committee applicants. So maybe they're not full questions. But otherwise, this is a lot of questions. And, uh, there were also the questions that, um, that residents had brought up that I read off before about particular, uh, things on our work plan that people said, uh, maybe it would be better in interviews, but now it seems like this is about interviews as well. So, um, I guess we can just, so I'd like to add that one, how, how they, you know, how they, uh, how they would address things on our upcoming, um, call or work plan. Um, which ones they think would be important. That would be, I think, uh, an interview question, as council member Madacheck said, but I would something more specific on those to be asked in terms of an interview. So I don't know what we do now. We're just voting and then the out, it's seems a little messy to me, the process of just voting and we're not saying whether they go on the application or the interview. How are you, how are you seeing us proceed to take this long list of questions and, and work with them?
We, we will determine, um, by majority vote, whether a question um, would be included in the application and then whether it's part of the application proper or a prompt for the letter of interest. And if it's neither of those things, then whether it would be a question asked in the interview itself. So we'll take many.
So you're thinking about asking us, like, voting first on whether they go, you're gonna take one set of votes on whether they go into the application and then a second set of votes on whether they go into the interview process?
Uh, potentially, yes.
Okay, I just wanna know what I'm doing.
I'll, I'll, don't worry. I'll do my best to be very clear and whi- whichever, however it's categorized by majority first is where it will land. Right? So if on the first vote, you know, I'll say, do we want to include this on the application, right? Not as a prompt to the letter of interest. And a majority of us support that, then we don't need to take additional votes. It will appear on the application.
Okay, now I'm hearing three things. Application, prompt in the letter and the interview questions. Are, are we voting on all three of those?
Yes, unless we don't want to include the interview questions tonight and we wanna have that done on January twenty-fourth. Uh, city manager?
Um, thank you, Mayor. So I have a, an Excel spreadsheet where I have tracked, I believe, hopefully, all the questions that you have cited. There may be one, one or two that I've missed. Um, so I would like to share my screen so you all can see that. And then there's also columns for whether you want it on the application, whether you wanna prompt in the letter of interest. And I do suggest you just decide your interview questions tonight. If there are ones that you feel strongly about and you can get consensus on, I'd say, let's go ahead and do it. You've already put most of them on the table. And then when we come back on the twenty-fourth, if there's things that come up that you forgot or you might wanna shift things around, then you can do that. But let's, let's get a little certainty. We definitely have to have certainty for the application, but you have a little bit of wiggle room for the interview. Um, so if you all don't mind, I can share my screen. You can see all the questions and then I'll just mark it as, as we go. Then I see the city clerk also has her hand up. Or she just put it down.
Uh, city clerk, go ahead and then we'll, um, I, thank you, Kimbra, for coming up with the idea of this spreadsheet. It will help us facilitate this process. Um, city clerk, did you wanna speak to any of this?
Oh, I was just gonna, uh, circle back to, um, council member Kamai. I believe what you, you all landed on for EPC was how would you balance private property rights and community benefits? And how would you consider public comments from residents?
And, um, for my benefit, council member Kamai, did you want us to ask both of those or just the public comment question?
From what I remember, they see, the two questions seem linked. I remember us having a long discussion about it, so to be together. I, I don't care where they are, but I, I just remember that came up quite a bit. And since the majority of what we do on council is, is, you know, land use, I would like. And since the majority of what we do on council is, is, you know, land use, I would like to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the clarification. So city manager, go ahead and show the spreadsheet and then we'll take a look and see if any of the questions need modification.
Can you see that? If I make it, there we go. Is is that big enough? Does it look weird?
Uh, it's, it's, it was better earlier. Now it's very small.
Okay. All right. Is that better?
Yes, yeah, that's better.
Okay. Okay, so we have how many council meetings have you attended or observed? And what was your level of involvement? One question. Application, letter of interest, or interview?
Um, this is gonna be hard to do if I can't see everybody. But I don't want to do a roll call vote. So let me see if I can uh, do, can do a battery. I'm trying to see if I, if I can see everybody and also the spreadsheet. I'm having trouble doing this. I'll just do the best I can. Okay, so let's go through these one by one for the, and first, before I start, are there any modifications to the questions? Are there any other questions that you would like?
Mayor, it's Ellen. If you hold down, do you see the, there's like a bar between where the Excel spreadsheet is and the column of of faces? If you drag it to the left, you can see all of us. Does that work for you?
Um, I, I, so yes, I I just have to, I have to scroll through. I can't see everybody all at once.
Okay.
So I'm counting on everyone then. When you put your hand up, keep it there for a little while so I can see everybody. Uh, councilmember Matta check.
Yeah, I think, um, row eleven. Did councilmember Kamay want to use the different wording that our city clerk found?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I can see everyone. Um, do you want me to tell you how many people have their hands up?
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll do the best I can. I think.
Okay.
All laptop screen. Um, thank you, though. Ask Mary Hacks.
So yes, are there any other questions? I just wanted to include the one that was kind of asked by several groups when they emailed us questions, which the way they asked it was long, but basically, how uh, how applicants engage with the, with things on our upcoming work plan? And although that's a vague question at this point, when we talked about it, people, or at least councilmember Matta check, said it would be best to put that in a, in an interview. So maybe we don't have to flesh out exactly how it appears here. But I would like to add one on, you know, how people, is that? Oh, okay, you have that there. Sorry. Do, okay, so I didn't see that the way it was worded there. So what do you, you want us to just go each person to go through one at a time?
We will, uh, take straw polls, right? So I'll ask everyone to raise their hand as we go through each question and categorize them. Um, and uh, I think, again, with an understanding, this is not an exhaustive list because on the twenty fourth, we will have another discussion about interview questions if we want to make modifications or add questions to that.
I see. So you're gonna go down, read these questions and ask us to raise our hands depending on whether we want it to be in the application, uh, letter of interest or interview?
Yes, to make sure there's majority support for where these questions will.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Uh, councilmember Matta check.
Sorry, um, on row twelve. Um, wouldn't that be the work plan and not the ten, the towel? Because um, I think we want to look longer term than the towel because that just goes through the first quarter. And I'm not sure that's been published yet either. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any remaining questions or comments about questions?
Uh, mayor, if I may, I just want a little more clarity on what I just changed for row twelve. So we have the current strategic work plan, which is what applicants would see in January. The upcoming work plan, they're not gonna know about yet. So I can change this to say what agenda items on the current strategic work plan or what items on the, on the current strategic work plan are important to you. Does, does that work? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands up for questions or comments. So what we will do then is go down each of these questions. Um, and then I'll ask in the order as they appear on the spreadsheet, whether they should be on the application itself, which means everybody must respond to it. Whether it should be a prompt for the letter of interest, which means they're strongly encouraged to respond to it. And if they don't, that's good for the council to take into consideration. Um, and whether, uh, and if if neither of those things, then whether we should consider it uh, for the interview, uh, meeting. So the first, um, and I'll, I'll just go based on number. So what is listed as question two? How many council meetings have you attended or observed and what was your level of involvement? Raise your hand if you think it ought to be in the application itself. So there's majority support for that. Thank you. Um, question three, why do you want to be appointed? Should it be in the application? Raise your hand. So that's one, two. Three, I'm only seeing three for that. Uh, so should it be a prompt for the letter of interest? Raise your hand. One, two, three. Four, five. Okay, so majority support. Uh, question four, why do you believe you were the most qualified to serve? Should that be in the application? Raise your hand. Uh, there is not majority support for application. Um, and actually, this might help. I, I, sorry to be rude, but city clerk and city manager, would you mind? Stopping your video because then I think that means all of the members of the council will be shifted up. In my, yes, that's perfect. Uh, okay, that helps a little bit. Uh, so, uh, the question, uh, why do you believe you are the most qualified to serve? So that's question four. So application, one more time, my apologies. There's no support for that. Uh, should it be in the letter of interest? Raise your hand. One, two, three. Or yes, there's majority support for the letter of interest. Thank you. What are your top priorities and how would they get tackled? Could that be in the application? Uh, there's not majority support. Um, letter of interest. I'm not seeing majority support for that. And then should it be an interview question? One, two, three, four, yes. Thank you. Question six. Uh, should that be in the application? One, so, uh, no, uh, should that be in the letter of interest? One, two, three, I'm only seeing three. Um, should that be an interview question? There are any issues you disagree with the council? So that's one, two. Okay, so I think we've got majority support for the interview. Um, the next question is, what does community for all mean for you? Should that be in the application? One, two, three. Uh, councilmember Kamay, your screen, I'll just vote, okay, good, that's the four. So yes, so that should be, that that got four votes. That will be in the application. Question eight, discuss one council goal and what it means for you. Should that be in the application? One, two, three, four, yes, that is in the application. Uh, nine, what is the most serious social issue in Mountain View? Should that be in the application? One. Uh, there's not majority support. Uh, letter of interest. One, two, three. Um, if C three, councilmember Command, I know you're having some technical, um, or connectivity problems. Let me just make sure that you're still there. Uh, councilmember Kamay, are you able to, uh, give it an audio vote? I hope she didn't drop off. Okay, uh, we'll, so we'll press on. So, uh, question nine, what is the most serious social issue? Um, I think there was not support for the application. With letter of interest, did we already do that? I think there was three for a letter of interest. Is that right? Show your hands. One, two, three, four. Okay, there you are. Thank you, councilmember Kamay. That does have majority support. Um, so question ten is, is the one that will require a little bit of research. Before we vote on the city attorney, do you have a, a preference for how we would? So let's say in the event you've, you know, there, there's a legal risk, but it's not illegal to ask. How would you like us to consider this question?
This is the question about whether or not they're gonna run in twenty twenty four, correct?
Right, yes.
Um, honestly, I don't, I don't think it matters if you do it on the app, as an application question or if you do it in person. And I don't think it is flat out, I can tell you now, it's not flat out illegal to ask that question. So it's not, it's not flatly illegal. That much I feel comfortable with saying.
Okay. Um, so then we'll go ahead and vote as if for any of the other questions. So is there support for including, uh, councilmember Matta check, would you want to speak to this?
Sorry, one clarification. I, I guess I want to make sure we get, um, good responses to this one. And so, you know, that is very definitive. Do we need to be a little bit more, less definitive and say, are you, um, thinking of running? Um, or are you gonna run, you know, any variation of that? Because some people say, well, you, I don't know for sure if I'm gonna run. And then they might say no, and then they run. You know, how do, how do we make it so we get, uh, the response we want?
Okay, um, is everyone, oh, thank you. Is everyone comfortable with modification? Not seen any hands raised. So then, is there support for including question ten on the application itself? It's raise your hand. One, two. Three, yes, there is majority support for including it in the application itself. And now question eleven, how can we enhance the city's livability and quality of life for our residents? Is there support for including that on the application? No, uh, the letter of interest. No, and then the interview. One, two, three, four, yes, majority support for that. And then what items on the council, sorry, on the current council strategic work plan are important to you? Support for including that on the application? The majority on the letter of interest. One, two, three, four. So yes, four for that one. And then, uh, the final question, how would you balance? Actually, I think we did have a question about public comment. But they're, okay, they are tied together. My apologies. Um, okay, so, so question thirteen, which is two questions. Um, is there support for including that on the application? Is there support for including that on the letter of interest? Oh, councilmember Shawalter.
How would you balance private property rights along with residents? Does that make sense?
Private property rights with public benefits, I think, is the question that was often asked in the EPC questionnaire. Uh, so I, I, I wouldn't interpret this literally, but I think it's, it, what councilmember Kamay was suggesting was that we include the questions that we've asked in the most recent planning commission interview process.
I feel better with the check wording. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and city clerk, you have your hand up?
Oh, I was just gonna, um, give the city manager the wording from our last EPC meeting, which was how would you benefit, how would you balance private property rights and community benefits? And how would you consider public comments from residents? Public rights and community benefits, yes. From residents, perfect.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. Um, so raise your hand if you support including that in the application. One. Okay, uh, in the letter of interest. One, two. Um, and then as an interview question. One, two, three, four. Okay, so majority support. Okay, um, we are a very thoughtful and deliberate action. Um, are there any final comments or questions about, uh, about the questions? There are still some other questions that I'll have to ask about the appointment process based on the agenda. So city manager, I think we can take down the red question. Ask Mary Hacks. Uh, but ask Mary Hacks, go ahead.
So I assume that the interview questions can be tweaked. Um, I, okay, good. And then I'm gonna be a pain about this one. There's what? The one question on the work plan, the way it's worded, I thought that what several of us have talked about was putting that as an interview question. And I'm not really interested in having somebody just name one or two things from the work plan that they're interested in. To me, that gives me no information. They're gonna have to deal with those. So I'm kind of making a plea now. Um, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but for, for switching it to the interview, because I think it's kind of, I forget where it landed, but maybe it was a prompt in the letter of interest. I think it's not a very useful prompt. So if people are willing to do that, they can. And if not, you know, it landed where it landed.
Is there support for re-categorizing that question as an interview question? Raise your hand. Two, three, four. Okay. So we successfully re-categorized that question. I completely, councilmember Shawalter intended to raise her hand. I'm learning. Um, okay, uh, so then that ends the discussion about the questions that we will ask the applicants. Although we will retain the item on the January twenty fourth meeting to discuss the interview questions if we want to add questions or make provisions. Okay, uh, city manager McCarthy.
Uh, thank you, mayor. I just want to reiterate. So where you all landed was you have four questions for the application. You have three questions or kind of prompts for the letter of interests. And then there's five interview questions. So when we come back on the twenty fourth, what we'll do is we'll just make sure that all of this is included in the staff report. And then you can discuss these five questions that you've landed on for your interview, tweak them, change them. But I would just remind you all, you don't be adding, you know, four other questions unless you want thirty, forty-five minute interviews. So I would try and stick to that five or six question range. And you're already at five. So just letting you all know where you landed, but we'll make sure to have all this in the staff report.
Fantastic. Thank you. Um, councilmember Shawalter.
Well, two things. I'm a little concerned that, um, we don't seem to have captured too many of the questions that, um, we received in emails, um, from, uh, for the application process. And if we only have one more question left, then that's, that's a bit of a problem. But for instance, I don't think we really got any of the questions from the Chamber of Commerce included. that's a bit of a problem. But for instance, I don't think we really got any of the questions from the uh Chamber of Commerce included. Um, but uh I'm wondering if um well, what I really want to talk about is the interview process itself. We um, we, we haven't really uh talked about that very much. And, you know, we could have group interviews. Uh, we could have an uh interview process that was essentially like a candidate forum where the person who got to be first on a question um rotated and um uh everybody got a turn to be first. You know, typically in a, in a candidate forum, everybody gets their, you know, minute opening or and then we go into questions or something along those lines. Um. Or we could have separate interviews and, and I, I would really like to um discuss that a little bit. I personally think that um particularly if we have nine or less um applicants and we don't really have any knowledge about how many applicants we'll get. Um, I think that's a handle, that's a group that you can handle in a sort of a forum or situation. And, and I do think that that kind of um process allows you an opportunity to see how people interact with one another, which is um uh, important. So that's what I wanted to bring up now is, is how are we going to do this interview process? Or are we going to talk to one person for fifteen minutes and another person for fifteen minutes and another person for fifteen minutes? Or are we getting to, we could conceivably, I, I know when I got interviewed for the EPC, we had four people that were interviewed at a time and they, they had several groups. So I, I just want to bring that up and say, how are we planning to do it? Because I, I don't think we've or if we've gotten that nailed down, I didn't, I didn't understand that. And I wanted to, I, I think it's something we should be talking about.
It's a good question, and we have not talked about it. Um, but if it's okay with uh everyone on the council, I'd like to ask the questions um in the agenda flow as they appear. And I think as we answer some of those questions, you could inform how we can conduct the interview process. It's, is that okay? Okay, like council member coming?
Great, thank you. Apologies. I have to, I've been switching back and forth. I have connectivity issues today. Um, so I'm comfortable with adding um a, a question really that, that Mr. Katz brought up from the chamber. I, I know that we have our ad hoc um group of council members who've been working on like the pedestrian mall and the downtown. So I don't know if it's better suited to, to defer to them if there's a question that they would like to add. But I think that might be a good like letter of interest prompt or um maybe even in the application process. But I do think that's something we have talked to a lot about as a council. So I'm happy to include that in a, in either the application or the letter of interest since we've kind of maxed out in the um in-person interview questions. Thanks.
Um, my, my apologies. Can you repeat that question one more time?
There was a, I, I didn't write down um Peter Katz from the Mountain View chamber. I think he had brought over a couple of different questions related to the business community. And I was just trying to hear what council member show Walter said and sharing before we moved on that I was open to including a question like that. But I didn't want to wordsmith it yet. I see council member Madachek's hand up. She's always our expert wordsmithers. So would defer to her or someone else to, to come up with something. So um I, I will let, let that happen. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So, so if there's a recommendation to include a question related to what Mr. Katz had suggested, then we'll take another set of notes that we had. Um, council member Madichak.
Yeah, sorry, um, I wasn't going to wordsmith those, but I agree that we should add um a question um regarding our small businesses especially. But um, I guess um, you know, I'm uh struggling a bit with, is this the appropriate time to make this comment? Um, since you said we wanted to discuss the process later, but I really uh feel that, given the importance of this appointment, I was expecting to spend more than ten to fifteen minutes with each person. And I, I want to make sure I have uh lots of um information about them and see how they respond to things. Um, and so I, I don't feel like we've maxed out on the number of questions that we can ask um during an interview. I was thinking more like thirty minutes. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, and, and uh we can add additional questions tonight or reserve the January twenty fourth meeting to include a quite, um, other questions too, because I think there will be members of the public who will suggest additional questions that we might think about. Um, I smear hands.
Yeah, I have to say, I actually kind of prefer these more specific questions about issues we grapple with. And a lot of the questions that came from the public are those. And I, I did like, I actually liked all the questions that Peter Katz raised, but we can't ask all of them. So I encourage him to, he said he might hold a forum and I, I encourage him to do so. But I think I'm kind of going in the direction that council member Madatrick did the one on uh small businesses or retain, retaining businesses. Um, perhaps we, I think it was the last question that uh Mr. Katz asked. Perhaps we could even capture that one. And I would be open to putting it, you know, any place in the interview or um or as a uh, you know, one of the questions uh on the application.
Uh, so I see that Mr. Katz is still in the attendees list. So what I'll suggest is that um, Peter, if you can hear us, or, or me, can you please send in an email um the questions that you had recommended? Um, or at least send it to the city clerk. And then once we have those questions, we can come back and decide whether to include them on the application as a prompt for the letter of interest or in the interview process itself. In that way, uh, we're not asking what the question is. We will know with certainty um what those recommendations are. Um, so we'll come back to that. Um. But first, uh, I want to go through the questions that staff have asked in the agenda flow. And the first is regarding the application timeline, which includes approving the date of applicant interviews. Um, and whether interviews will be conducted in person or remotely by a Zoom. Um, so uh, let's start with the application timeline. Um, which uh I believe is included in a patch, attachment one, potential timeline for appointment. Look at that. And then if there are no comments or questions, we just do a straw. Council member Madichak.
Thanks. And the only comment I have is um under the bullet point about advertising the last one. Other methods is directed by council. And I think it would be useful to send um information to the neighborhood associations for distribution to all the neighborhoods. And, you know, the city has interest lists for different topics. And I was wondering if any of those um would be appropriate or the email distribution list for um the newsletter uh that the city sends out. Um, I feel like email is a, a great way to reach a lot of people and you've already got social media on there. That's another great way. And but I think the city has quite a few different email lists that could be used. Thanks.
Thank you. And so I, I think that's a reasonable suggestion that hopefully doesn't really need a vote, but um city staff is it's simple enough to promote the opportunity in, uh, for instance, the neighborhood lists and um in other uh email lists that we may have.
Yeah, we can certainly work with the communication staff to get it out to all of the distribution lists that we have and and contact the various neighborhood groups for sure.
Okay, thank you. Council member Abbe Koga.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I think that's great. Um, the only change like that we talked about earlier is the conflict on the twenty sixth or the conflict. So um, if we can do it on the thirtieth, I think that would be the best state we have left to choose from. Or the twenty fifth, I guess, but I think the thirtieth would be the preference.
Um, city manager, did you want to weigh in on that question?
Um, certainly. Thank you, mayor and council member Abbe Koga. So I would just say um, when we, when you all select a date, I've heard um interest from council member Madachek saying perhaps thirty minute interviews, maybe some of you are interested in shorter interviews, but depending on how many applicants you have, let's say there's ten people. That's five hours worth of interviews if it's uh thirty minutes each person. Um, obviously, you can figure out a process to narrow it down, which we should talk about. Um, but it, if you want to have it on the thirtieth, then you got to think about your starting time. Because I don't, I don't know that you'd want to start, you know, at five or six and go that long. Maybe you do, but just think about that, um, just in terms of how many applicants you have and how long the interview is.
Uh, council member Abbe Koga.
Uh, yes, thank you. Thank you, city manager. Um, so yeah, I was thinking along those lines. Um, thirty, thirty minutes would be fine, but um I would like to suggest that we find a way to um reduce the number or, or come down to, I'm going to say five finalists. Maximum five. And, and then we can plan accordingly. Um. I, I'll say on the thirtieth, I actually have, gonna be in all, all day interviews at MTC for our finalists or the executive directors. I'm gonna be pretty interviewed out already. So I don't want to be interviewing ten or more applicants. And I think five is a reasonable number. Anywhere between three to five. Um, so that would be my suggestion. Thanks.
Um, so I think a majority of the council, let's do a quick straw, straw poll on this. Is there support for having some preliminary process where we would weed out applicants that were interested in interviewing, sort of like San Jose process. So raise your hand if you support kind of additional process. Council member, council member come in.
Thank you. So um before we, we vote on if we're, we're comfortable with that, can you maybe enlighten us on, on what San Jose is using for the criteria? Or who is determining this? And what's the?
Um, the, it uh, there, there are no established criteria. Each individual council member submits, I think it's um, it's four or five names from, from the list. And if four or more council members expressed interest in interviewing that person, then that person advances to the interview process. And four is less than a majority, since there are only nine members of the council now. Um, you know, four is, is indication of, is a, you know, substantial interest, but it's not majority support. Um, it doesn't have to be that, but that's, that's, that's just the reason.
Right, but but to clarify, the city of San Jose is a full-time city council, right? So they review the, the council members review all the applications and then via their city clerk, they submit these names. Is that correct? Is that what you're saying? Okay, so, you know, I think that um I, I would think I would be a little bit more comfortable with a criteria that was kind of accessible to the, to the public and just kind of letting people know what we might be using as a barometer. You know, I, I appreciate the comments about wanting to make sure we have a good sense of who the individual is and, and I agree with that. Um. So I don't feel constricted by a certain time with which we do the interviews. I do feel it's important to, as much as possible. Um, you know, if we're, if it's an open and public process to apply, then I think we need to have an open and a public process in which we let people know what the criteria is that we will be um reviewing the applications. So before we do a, so that's kind of the comment that I have there. I feel a bit uncomfortable taking a vote on saying that we, we weed out people if we don't discuss what the weeding out process is. And since we are a part-time council, not a full-time council, I do think there's like a slight variation there. Um, and I, I, you know, where everyone and their staff, I'm assuming council staff will be reviewing these applications. I, I you know, we could do that. Um, but I want to just have an open discussion about that first. Thanks.
Okay, no problem. Um, may, maybe a quick, quick question for the city attorney. If a majority of the council is interested in having that kind of process where there would be some preliminary way to express interest in interviewing some applicants and weed, weeding out those where members of the council clearly don't have interest. Um, would you feel comfortable in devising that process and coming back to us with a recommendation? Or would you rather us decide what that process is in this meeting?
So can you provide clarification on what you mean by devising that process? Is, so I the, and I guess what I mean by that is, are you, are you suggesting that I maybe present some pot- potential criteria for early elimination of certain applicants? Um, or some other process by which, that you would use to eliminate certain applicants? Is that the question?
Uh, would, yes, I see many members of the council have hands up, so they may have strong feelings about this. Maybe, maybe we'll listen to the comments and then I'll come back.
Okay.
Still around. Um, council member come in.
So the, the other alternative I would say is just looking, looking back at the timeline, it looks like applications are due the eighteenth. Can council discuss at our meeting on the twenty fourth, what potential criteria we have based on how many applicants we receive? Because it kind of feels like a little bit cart before the horse, right? If, and so maybe that could be the compromise, which is to say at the twenty fourth meeting, council will evaluate the list of applications and discuss criteria for how we'd like to move forward with the interviews. Um. That's my proposal. Sorry.
Thank you. I think it's a, a good suggestion. I smear hands.
Yeah, I like that suggestion. In addition to that, I think the one thing we have on the application that to me clearly, I mean, we can use this on the twenty fourth, but the one that uh, that uh, I think we put on as criteria is uh the one, I don't remember the exact words, but the, the question regarding uh whether they've been to council meetings and how many. I think that we can see, maybe we can discuss it more on the twenty fourth, but if there's, you know, a clear distinction between um applicants. I, I don't want to say that they, it's all a numbers game and anybody, you know, will rank them by number of council meetings and that's the only criteria. But if there's, you know, a bunch of applicants that have been to, you know, somewhere between one and zero council meetings, to me, that that would be uh a reason to um, to uh, you know, screen those out. That seems to me to be the clearest criteria we have already. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Abbe Koga.
So I was gonna ask if we could receive the applications as soon as possible to give us the time to review the um. I mean, I was expecting to review them all. Um, so it would be helpful to get them as soon as we can, so we have more time to do that. And, and, you know, I'm fine with the process, waiting on till the twenty fourth to decide based on how many applications we get. But you know, I, I was expecting we're gonna read through all the applications at some point. Um, and the issue for me was with how many we're gonna interview the night of the, or whatever day we picked for the interviews. So um, the criteria, we're sure we can talk about it, but I'm just, was gonna base it on the applications and the answers and come up with my, you know, top however many to interview.
Um, maybe a, a question for staff. What realistically, based on the proposed submission date or deadline, what would be the soonest we could receive the applications?
We do need to do some work with the county to verify residency and voter eligibility on applications. So if we get an application, you know, for forty-nine um on the eighteenth. We, we can try to have everything ready by Friday. Um, my concern at this particular time is we would normally put the agenda out for the twenty fourth on this, on the nineteenth, right? So that, that, right, the day after we accept applications. I don't know that we can turn that around that quickly. I don't know that we can turn that around that quickly. So I don't know if you want to move the application deadline up. So that you can have, you know, access to all of that in a packet for the twenty-fourth or that's something to consider.
So let's, let's start with the application timeline. And once we've approved the application timeline, then I think a lot of these other questions can be included. So the proposed deadline for applications is five P M, January eighteenth. We can reduce the amount of time applicants submit an application. And that would give the city clerk more time to prepare the application packet for us to review.
So how far would we have to move it up? What would the new date be?
I think that if you moved it up to that Monday, the sixteenth by five, we could probably turn all the applications around for the packet that would go out on the nineteenth for the twenty-fourth. For you to do a first first run at it. If that was, if that's the intent here, that you have the ability to look at applications and narrow the field down before the thirtieth. Then that would be my recommendation.
Okay, well, I'd love to hear what other people think. I mean, honestly, I think this timeline is ridiculous and I we're constrained, but to get out, to get the word out, to get it filled out and to get us to read them, it's it shouldn't be this way, but I understand that here has made it this way, so this is what we have to deal with. So I'd like to hear comments from others.
Thank you. Councilmember Abigail.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess my question was, do we need to have all the applications? You know, and how should I say this? So I wasn't so concerned about having all the applications to us before the meeting on the twenty-fourth. Oh, I, how do I do? I was one, I guess I wanted to know if we can get the applications beforehand. You know, my thought was if they're due on the eighteenth, could we get them on the twentieth? But do they need to be published at that time in part of the packet? Or are we able to just access the applications ourselves? Like if, you know, we were hiring somebody, just to give us as much time to read through them. I don't think the content of the applications matters so much on the twenty-fourth. It'd be good to know how many we got, so then from there we could decide how many we want to narrow it down to. But I wasn't necessarily thinking on the twenty-fourth, we would do that whittling down based on the applications. And then the Monday is actually MLK Day, so I don't know if that would be an issue since City Hall won't be open that day.
We would definitely want to avoid the closure, for sure. Thank you for pointing that out. City Attorney Lo, do you, do you want to weigh in on the?
Yeah, I'm not seeing any reason why they can't have the applications as they come in early. I mean, they can, I think that they can be doled out to the city council members on a rolling basis. As they come in, they are shared with the council members individually for their own personal individual review of each applicant's papers.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Well, I think we may have actually solved the problem then, if we could just roll them out. But because basically, it's really a number we're going to be worrying about. And if we had the number of applications on the twenty-fourth, then you know, we can do the math and figure out how many we have, you know, time to interview. And, and I honestly think it would be a pretty manageable number because we have, there's a lot we're asking for. I mean, a Form seven hundred, a letter of interest. Most people have a resume, or many people have a resume, but they probably want to redo it of answering the questions. I mean, this is a pretty short timeframe for people to get this stuff together, so I don't think we're going to have you know, hundreds. I would imagine we'll have on the order of, you know, five to ten, but, but we'll see. But anyway, the other thing I was going to say is, sometimes in these processes, you appoint a subcommittee to go through the applications and say, you know, these are the ones we're going to interview. If we have that many, that's also a possibility. We don't have to do it necessarily as a group. And I just wanted to bring that up because there might be that might be helpful.
Thank you. I have a suspicion that we have very strong feelings about this and it would be very difficult to find consensus on having a subcommittee. But I think with the understanding that the applications can be provided to the council on a rolling basis. Is there support for the proposed timeline? That's included in attachment one. And with the addition that on January twenty-fourth, if there's we'll say a significant number of applications, and we could decide what that means. Then on January twenty-fourth, we would talk about this preliminary process to exclude or eliminate applications where there was not interest from the council in interviewing the applicants. And then the only other modification would be the interview date, which cannot be January twenty-sixth. And maybe the best way to do that, City Manager, unless you have a proposed date tonight. Is that something that we should hold the council on later, or should we really pick a date tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you need to land on a date now. There's really not much time and you don't have many options. So we discussed the thirtieth. I mean, there's also the twenty-seventh. Again, it's a Friday night. You know, I just don't know if folks' availability on Friday night is not as great as other nights, but you really have till the thirtieth, pretty much. That's it.
So thoughts on the interview date from the council? Is there support for Friday of the twenty-seventh? Or Monday the thirtieth? Hands for Monday the thirtieth, if there's support. One, two, three, four, unanimous support. So then, is there support for the proposed timeline? With the modification that the interview will be conducted, interviews will be conducted on Monday, January third. Councilmember Kame.
Just wanted to clarify that we were on the same page too. I'd be interested in in-person interviews with the and I know we'll be doing the hybrid meeting option so that people, the public can attend virtually should they choose, but I think we had discussed, someone had brought that up, and I think it's, so I'd like to nail that down, that I would like it to be in person. So I just wanted to clarify that, if there's, if that's all right to amend.
Yes, yes. And that was, that's the next question on the agenda. So is there support for an in-person interview? Process, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. So unanimous support for an in-person interview process. It would occur Monday, January thirtieth. And then, so we've already, City Clerk.
Is there a time that you wanted to shoot for? Do you want to leave that to the twenty-fourth? It will be easier. We know we can, you know, give that information to applicants, but if we don't have it yet, we don't have it yet.
Okay, Councilmember Abigail.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, it's just me, but I do have these scheduled interviews for my MTC director and I'm waiting to hear back from them, what time that'll be, and I'll be in the San Francisco, so I imagine the earliest I can do is five o'clock.
Councilmember Abigail.
Oh, I'm sorry. So if we can wait till later, I can at least get an answer from hopefully tomorrow as to my commitment with MTC that earlier in the day and let you know as the earliest I can get back down here.
Well, if you're pretty certain that five o'clock works for you, would there be general support for establishing that time right now? Does five o'clock work for everybody on Monday the thirtieth? Okay. So then there's unanimous support for five P M. In person, and we've approved the timeframe, approving and providing input on the applications. So now, we're going to go back. Mr. Katz did send an email with the questions and I think hopefully you've all received it. If you have not, you know, please let us know, but feel free to read through them. And if there are questions you would like to include, then now is the time to suggest that we include them. Councilmember Madachek.
I think these are questions that would be good to ask during the interview, and I would suggest either number one or number two. Do I should I read them so that members of the public know which ones they are? Number one is, if appointed, how will you develop and maintain a relationship with the business community? And number two is, what efforts would you take to help our existing businesses stay in Mountain View? Make it easier for new businesses to enter and reduce the number of longstanding empty storefronts? I could go for either one or both of those.
Okay, thank you. We'll take a round of comments and then we'll vote.
Yes, I'm particularly interested in number two because I've heard, you know, a lot of interest in that, both from the Chamber of Commerce, downtown businesses, but also from residents. You know, I think we've all been getting emails from residents regarding how much they care about small businesses and vacancies and and so forth. So it's number two that I'm, if we can only do one, I'm very interested in number two. And also, I'm actually interested in all of them and hope that the chamber can hold a forum as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Kame.
I like, I like number one and two, as Councilmember Madachek suggested. And could we have one as an interview question and one either in the application or the letter of interest if colleagues are interested? Maybe number two could be the interview question, since we heard Vice Mayor is interested, particularly in that one. And we can add that to the interview. You know, we can adjust questions on the twenty-fourth, need be. But I do agree that that could be a good in-person one. And then for the first question from Mr. Katz's list, I would be happy to, wherever that landed. Thanks.
Thank you. That's a good suggestion. Any other thoughts? Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Yeah, I'm quite partial to the fourth one. What are your thoughts, ideas for improving the housing supply to meet today's requirements, including R three, as well as planning for the future? Relatedly, increasing housing needs to increase attendance levels at, well, I'm not sure if we need, but that first part of four, I think is an excellent question, and I think it would be a good one to add to the application.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or thoughts? So I'll propose that we use the same process that we used for the questions that we considered earlier. So for question one, which is, if appointed, how will you develop and maintain a relationship with the business community? First, application. Second, letter of interest. Third, interview. Is there support for including in the application? Raise your hand. One, two. Okay. Is there support for including in the letter of interest? One, two, three, four. Okay, so question one will appear in the letter of interest as a prompt. And then the second question is, what efforts would you take to help our existing businesses stay in Mountain View? And then there are many components to that question. Is there support for including that as an application question? Letter of interest. Interview question. There is unanimous support for including questions too as an interview question. And the other question that was brought up was the first part of question four. What are your thoughts or ideas for improving the housing supply to meet today's requirements as well? As well as planning for the future. Is there support for including that in the application? There's majority support for including that. Okay, application question. Thank you. So with that, we'll close the questions that we'll include in the application and letter of interest. And on the twenty-fourth, we will revisit the questions for the interview. We've already discussed the advertising timeframe and the deadline to apply. And that was the staff recommendation with the addition, as Councilmember Madachek had proposed, to promote it also in the email lists that the city hates. And the next question is the questions we've already discussed. Directing the city clerk to randomly select the interview order of the applicants. Is there support for doing that? Raise your hand. One, two, three. Councilmember Shaw Walter.
I think Councilmember Kame and I both brought up the concept of group interviews in some of our comments. No?
I did, but I was hoping that we wouldn't have to do that.
Ah, okay. Now, I, I I think that it's valuable to see how people interact, but you know, I'm only only one. So I think a group interview is valuable, but that's I'm not getting any, not getting any support. Okay.
Win some, lose some, I like to say. So is there support for directing the city clerk to randomly select the interview order of the applicants? There is majority support for that. Now, this is not on the list, but I think it's important to discuss the selection procedure. And there is a proposal attachment to in the packet. I think the intent is to try to adhere as much as possible to the process we use for the planning commission. It's a little bit more detailed here. Are there any questions or comments about the selection procedure? Or is there general support for the proposed procedure in the staff? See, no hands up. Raise your hand if you support the selection procedure as proposed by staff. So there's support for that. That's everything on the list I have. Staff, is there any additional direction that you need?
Mayor, I think we are good. How about I summarize? Just so that we're all on the same page, would that be helpful?
Sure.
Okay, so we have captured all of the prior questions that council determined whether they were going to be in the interview, the letter of interest, or the application packet itself. And then we've also added the three additional questions that the Chamber of Commerce proposed. We will bring those back to you all on the twenty-fourth, and then you can look at them again. If you have any tweaks or changes or additions, you can talk about that at that time. And then in terms of the application timeline, we have landed on applications being distributed to council members.
we have landed on applications being distributed to council members on a rolling basis as they come in. As a side note, um, I would just note that it is very typical to receive applications, most of them at the very end. So just want to make you all aware of that, but we will distribute them on a rolling basis as they come in. We will, um, be interviewing candidates on January thirtieth in person at five o'clock P M. And at the January twenty-fourth meeting, uh, council will discuss and, uh, you will know at that point in time how many applications there were. And we will discuss a process if we need to have one, if we need to select a certain number of candidates. I will say I would like to speak with my colleagues on how that process might look because I'm, I'm a little, um, I, I just want to make sure that it, it would be a smooth process for you all. So I will be speaking with the city attorney and city clerk on, um, however many applications there are. If it's, if you get thirty applications, then we'll have to figure something out. So we will try and bring something to you all to react to. Um, and then in terms of the advertising timeframe of the vacant position, uh, we're okay with the deadline, the eighteenth, five P M. Anything later than that will not be taken. And we will also make sure that for advertising, we will send information to the neighborhood associations to share the information and everything else we had listed, which does include, uh, City Hall Connection, social, uh, city's interest list. We will just make sure we do a very robust communications outreach in multiple languages, um, through all of our channels. And then lastly, the, uh, city clerk will randomly select the interview order of the applicants. And, uh, you all are in unanimous support of the selection process that staff outlined. So I think, I think I captured everything, but, um, that is a summary. So thank you all for getting through this in a, uh, very clear way. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the summary. Two quick, hopefully trivial additions. We had, I, I neglected to ask for support, but I think for, for, um, asking for contact information from the applicants that would be needed available to the public. There's support for that. Just show of hands to clarify. Cool. And then I hope it goes without saying, but, um, an application that is late or that does not include all of the materials will be deemed incomplete and an applicant will be ineligible for an interview. Just, yeah, thank you. Um, are there any final questions or comments before we conclude item four point one? I'm not seeing any, uh, so, um, thank you all for, um, your patience in working through this. This was difficult, but I think, um, we've, we've made some good and important decisions. Just before we adjourn, I wanted to, I, I was hoping there'd be sort of an I M E equivalent person. Uh, but I want to, um, publicly acknowledge and, and thank the staff for their incredible efforts over the past few days preparing for the storm and responding to many, many requests for service. Uh, you know, public safety, public works, uh, C S D, I think everybody has been involved in that. Um, and I'm, I'm very proud of her efforts. I know it takes a lot of work and it often doesn't go. So, so thank you very much for your efforts, um, in serving our residents over the past few days. Um, and with that, uh, thank you so much for joining us. The next city council meeting will be held in person with a virtual component on January tenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, I am looking forward to never having to chair a meeting again, or I guess in the context of being there. Until then, stay healthy. The meeting is during at nine twenty-one, you know, if you're everyone.